What was that draft?
One minute, 30 seconds.
It's gotta be done by two.
Good afternoon. I will now call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission meeting of February 8th, 2022. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. We will proceed with public hearings, starting with ordinances P 33.
Yes, ma'am. We, Madam Chairman and members of the board, you have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the December 22nd, 2021 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners Denise Hernandez. Item P 33 is PDD 220037. This is the adoption hearing for this item. It's an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map. Map 2-15 is Sheet 23 from RES 9 residential, nine dwelling units per gross acre to COM commercial on approximately 3.34 acres of real property located at the intersection of Gall Boulevard and Chancy Road, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer, severability, and an effective date. This went to the local planning agency on January 6th, 2022, who found it consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Today, we're asking that you approve the proposed COM plan amendment and adopt by roll call vote.
Okay. I'm trying, sorry, I don't have it on my notes. So we take comment now or sit on the?
This is applicant initiated?
This is a applicant initiated.
So if there is an applicant that wishes to speak to the ordinance adoption, they would be first, and then it would be public comment.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to speak on this? Oh, you do wish to speak on this?
Well, I just want to say, Justina Gale, Florida Design Consultants, 1536 Amberfield, Land O' Lakes Boulevard. And we wanted to thank staff for everything. We agree and concur with approval. Thank you.
All right. And is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Anyone signed up this item?
No one has signed up for this item.
And do you have anybody on WebEx?
No one on WebEx?
I don't think we have anybody on WebEx.
We don't have anyone on WebEx.
Then?
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. A roll call.
Roll call vote.
Okay. District 1, Commissioner Oakley?
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano?
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey?
Aye. Okay, P 34.
We have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the October 20th edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
P 34 is PDD 220058. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for tax amendments, Chapter 7 Transportation Element, Table 7-2A Quarter Preservation, repealing Tables 7-2B MAP Amendments to the Highway Vision Plan and Functional Class MAP 7-36 and the Transportation Quarter Preservation MAP, MAP 7-37, and additional tax amendments for consistency. This was presented to a local planning agency on 11/4/21, who found it consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to the board, and it was transmitted on 12/7/21. Today, we're asking that you hold a public hearing, take public comment, and adopt by roll call vote.
Okay. So is there anyone who wishes to discuss this item? Anyone signed up to discuss this?
We have no one signed up for item 34.
Board members?
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
It's a roll call vote.
A roll call again.
It's an ordinance, yes.
Okay, sorry. Ordinance, roll call, roll call.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley?
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano?
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey?
Aye. Okay, P 35.
This item was originally published for hearing at the January 25th Board of County Commissioners meeting in Newport Ritchie and continued to this date and time.
Denise?
That doesn't sound right. Was it? Denise, was it its first hearing?
The first reading was 1/25/2022 on this item.
Okay, so it's first, this is a two hearing. So it should have been advertised, it should have been advertised for this date as well.
Okay, let me verify that.
May I proceed?
What?
Oh, sorry.
And we do have proof of publication for this date and time, a second reading in the Tampa Bay Times of December 22nd, 2021.
Thank you.
Now you can go.
Okay, thank you so much. P 35 is PDD 220168. I do want to mention that there are some documents on your areas, providing some modifications to the item. So basically, the modification to the item that you are receiving today is that the proposed moratorium expansion area does not include parcels that are collectively known as a Wiregrass Ranch DRI. The Wiregrass Ranch DRI and Development Order Comprehensive Plan, PD, future land use designation, and associated sub-area policies, and the MPUD. The reason why we're removing those, those require employment center uses with higher density and residential development and multifamily development nearby. Multifamily within development within the Wiregrass Ranch is designated to be better integrated into the overall development, and thus, the moratorium expansion area exclude those areas. So you have a modification to the agenda memo and to the expansion area moratorium map. So I will read this. This is actually the adoption, and we're asking that you take public comment and you adopt by roll call vote. It's an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, amending ordinance 2108 to expand the moratorium area, providing for authority, legislative findings of fact, moratorium area, temporary moratorium imposed, and severability. And this went to the local planning agency with the exclusion area, and they found it consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners on 1/6/22. And this went to the Board of County Commissioners on first reading on 1/25/22. And I believe you have some folks signed up to speak on this matter.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
First person we have signed up is Cynthia Spidey.
Good afternoon and thank you. My name is Cynthia Spidey. I'm with Stearns Weaver at 401 East Jackson Street in Tampa. So good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to this issue. I'm here today to raise a few concerns and to object to the moratorium area expansion. As the board members may recall, and also during my decade-plus tenure at Pasco County in the Planning Department and capital budgeting, we had invited the ULI to evaluate Pasco County market areas, and they came up with proposed market areas, which included the South Market and the Urban Service Area, and these areas were adopted. These areas include the State Road 54 and 56 corridor and are the intended target for growth. The multifamily moratorium is slowly expanding and extending into the Urban Service Area and South Market Area. I am glad that you removed Wiregrass. This moratorium is counterintuitive to this growth management strategy. Unintended consequences may include promoting multifamily outside the moratorium boundary, such as suburban and rural market areas, as well as promoting unintentionally or inadvertently promoting smaller single-family lots, including the 40s, as the market adapts and seeks to achieve density in other housing products. These types of moratoriums perpetuate urban sprawl, do not promote getting people out of their car, and lastly, during the recent PEDC Economic Forecast Luncheon, rent was shown to be the largest contributor of inflation. Restricting, excuse me, restricting density on the supply side will continue to exacerbate the already high rents. Lastly, if dimensional standards are considered for this area, please have such design standards go through the traditional LDC amendment process and not via a BCC policy board memo. Design standards and LDC implementation tends to be better when everyone has a seat at the table. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else signed up?
Yes. Nicole Lynn?
Good afternoon, everyone. Nicole Lynn, 4921 Memorial Highway, Tampa, with our DIR group. Thanks for hearing us on this subject matter. I just wanted to also reiterate what Cynthia said a second ago about exclusion for Wiregrass Ranch, which noted. In addition to that, I just wanted to say that the expansion of the moratorium area obviously seeks to limit the housing opportunities where the ULI study had previously identified for concentration to be, so obviously, urban sprawl would occur. And make sure that you are aware that there are folks that are here that are not in agreement with moving forward with the expansion of the moratorium. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hope Kennedy?
Good afternoon. I'm Hope Kennedy from the North Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce, 1868 Highland Oaks Boulevard, Suite A. This is absolutely terrible for business. Please do not continue with these moratoriums. This is not a creative use for coming up with a problem. We have a workforce problem, and the housing crisis is directly correlated with the affordable housing. Moratoriums are lazy, and I encourage you to look for other creative ways to find affordable housing solutions. And the moratoriums in general are just absolutely lazy, and so we encourage you to be pro-business, help us out with the workforce issue that we have. As I've mentioned before, the affordable housing is a direct correlation, so please be very smart in making house moves. Thank you.
Thanks, Hope.
Just to clarify, were you speaking on behalf of the Chamber of that address?
Yes, absolutely.
Or your home address?
100%. They absolutely did, sir. It's on our priorities list for affordable housing, as well as workforce. I'm sorry?
Do they vote on this actual matter?
It's our legislative priorities that are put forth to our Board of Directors each year. This was on our agenda last year and continues to roll over to the agenda this year. That is already approved. It's part of our legislative priorities.
The actual agenda item?
It's an actual priority item, affordable housing and workforce. Please do.
That was the last person signed up in advance.
Is there anyone on WebEx who'd like to address this issue?
We have no one on WebEx.
And is there anyone else here that would like to address the expansion of the moratorium? Okay, and I have a question. So I'm confused on the dates, the dates of the moratorium. So when would it end? It's a 180-day? Oh, no, we extended that.
Nikhtara Spitos, Planning and Development Department. Madam Chair, the moratorium was extended, yes, extended time-wise in October until April of 2022.
So this, more time will go for two more months?
Yes, but if the moratorium were to pass, it's retroactive back to January, I believe.
So it, okay, I'm sorry. When does it expire?
Your expansion is not going to expand the time the moratorium is in place.
Right.
So if the original ordinance expires April 2022 without further action of this board, that's when it's going to expire.
I don't think legally we can expand it more than one year. Okay. Question more?
I, you know, we, oh. I don't think I need to continue to speak on this. We know my issues with it, as well as we've heard from economic development professionals, actually, and have written this letter. We've heard from the Sheriff's Office. We've heard of their concerns. You know, the people that spoke today, I appreciate them speaking. We spoke to people that represent the apartment industry from Tampa. We also heard from somebody that lives in Tampa. I didn't have one person that actually lives in Pasco County come up and speak against this item today. The majority of people, I'm sure you've heard the same, that live in Pasco County are for this, and I represent the citizens of Pasco County.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You know, when we look at the traffic in the corridor, we're trying to do improvements. It's going to take time. The east-west gridlock, there's no solution that ULI first looked at down the 54 corridor. That did not happen. So all of a sudden, now we get the extra density without the traffic flow to go with it. Some of these decisions could have come in where we take a job-creating piece of land and turn it into apartments where it's costing ourselves jobs.
Yep.
So I'm comfortable with what we've got in place.
I'll make a motion. Approve.
Well, under, okay, now we're under discussion. You know, I'm a little torn here because it's only two months is this extension, so I don't think, I don't think, if it was a year, I for sure wouldn't be voting for it. But I agree with the representative from the chamber that we need more workforce and affordable housing. And I hear it, I get calls all the time. People can't find a place to live. We're trying to attract companies here, and where are they going to live? Because there is no inventory out there for someone to be purchasing a house or renting an apartment. So I know this is going to pass, but just because of my work with workforce housing and affordable housing, I think, I think I'm going to vote no, but I know it's going to pass. And I've just mentioned, Commissioner Oakley, I have one more thought I was going to say. I agree that we want to protect jobs, but I think we can have housing and jobs. And I think we've been shown that opportunity, and when you saw the report from the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council that showed vertical mixed use, and that is jobs and housing. And so I think it can be done if we, if we put our mind to it, that we can have both. Commissioner Oakley?
Right. The problem with this issue, and we've seen it grow pretty good, is not affordable housing because these houses, these apartments are renting for $2,000, $2,200 a month. That's not affordable housing for people. We do need affordable housing in our county. But some of this housing is not for jobs in our county, but for jobs in other counties nearby. And so we need to focus on jobs in our county and housing in our county. And because of this moratorium, we've had other areas of the county that have come up with some multifamily projects that wouldn't have come up if this was still open and they could come here. But it's in other areas of our county that we're going to get some of the multifamily housing.
Yeah, and you know, you bring a big, good point, and I want to ask our staff, and just kind of going to what Hope said, I think that we do have an exclusion for workforce housing. So is that correct, that this moratorium would not exclude workforce housing?
Madam Chair, I would have to refer to the documents really quick. If you'll give me a moment.
Because I think we are, you know, working to incentivize workforce housing.
I believe affordable housing in the West Market area were exempt from the moratorium.
Is it only in the West? Well, everything outside of his district is not in the moratorium, but I just want to know if, not that I know of any workforce housing that's coming, but certainly, we want some in that area.
Oh, yeah.
So people who live, who work there can live there. But I'm just checking to see if we've included, because if not, I maybe would want to make an amendment, although it's only two months, that if someone came in with an affordable housing project, we would want that, right?
Madam Chair, since while we're waiting, and I mean, again, the motion, we have a motion in a second, so I don't know how much, I'll call the question in a second.
Well, he's answering my question.
After he does that, then I'll call the question. But again, you know, talking to people, obviously, economic development side, and people that are trying to bring businesses to this county, the big concern is that along the 54 and 56 corridor, we're running out of that land. So it has the proper zoning now to bring in commercial, not only retail, but office as well. We have master plan communities that were very well thought out, e.g., Wiregrass, for example, that has the entitlements. Avalon Park West has entitlements. When we work together with those communities to build that quote, "really true walkable community," that's when it makes sense. But we can't continue to lose our job-creating sites. It makes it very difficult on our economic development team. It makes it very difficult on our EDC to be able to recruit those companies or bring those companies here because they want to be along major corridors. And we heard when I asked the questions to Bill Cronin, which is the, obviously, economic development pro for our county and knows more than anybody about that, he said, "That's a concern." So I-
Yeah, I had breakfast with Mr. Cronin yesterday, and we talked, or Friday, we talked specifically about this, and he agrees when you're bringing in a company that is bringing 500 jobs, they need to have, one of the things they're going to look at is, is housing available for the people that are coming here? So listen, I work very hard on economic development and bringing jobs here. It's why I started a workforce training program. It's why I chair Economic Development, or vice chair for the National Association of Counties. So I do know a lot, I do work with economic development. I think you need both, and I'm looking forward to the study to see where we are. But I'm asking you about workforce housing.
Madam Chair, the original ordinance for the moratorium did not distinguish between any type of multifamily. So multifamily in general, it did not carve out any exceptions for affordable housing.
We have a motion second, I'll call the question.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I believe that was when I made the motion to remove multifamilies from C2 housing. That's when they kept in the West Market and the affordable housing and other exceptions.
He is correct.
Okay.
That's fair.
All right, well, we'll go.
When is this presentation going to be ready to be presented to the board? Because the moratorium is allowed only until the ordinance is updated.
We're working on the study with the intent of bringing information to the board members towards the end of March.
Okay, thank you. So it'll be before the moratorium ends?
In terms of the initial information, yes, but in terms of presenting at the board meeting, that may occur in April.
Okay. So I guess I'm going to go ahead and support it because it's just for a few more months, and I think we'll have-
Roll call or?
Yeah, so roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley?
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano?
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey?
Aye. Okay.
Thank you all. Coming since prevail. Good job. Appreciate it.
Then we're at P 36.
Madam Chairman and members of the board, you have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the December 22nd edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Okay, this is a zoning. Do we have to swear, do we swear people in?
This is a continuance.
And we have two continuances.
Yeah, you can do the continuance.
Okay, so we'll take up both the continuances, and then we'll move on. So P 36 and P 39.
P 36 is PDD 227583. It's a zoning amendment, AGJM Pasco LLC. It's a request to continue the item to the February 22nd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Can I ask why that's being continued?
That is being continued because the Planning Commission was continued. So since the Planning Commission meeting was continued, the board is being continued as well.
Move to continue time certain?
Second.
I just thought I heard this on the Planning Commission.
That's correct, but we didn't have enough time to turn it over for this particular meeting.
Oh, okay.
You got a motion second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, P 39.
And by the way, it's also on the west side of the county, and there is, there is some opposition, so that's another reason. I apologize for not stating that. So you want to do P 39 since it's continuance?
And we have proof of publication in the January 9th and January 16th publications of the Tampa Bay Times.
P 39 is FAC 220006. It's a petition to vacate a portion of platted right-of-way, and the request is to continue the item to the 3822 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 and date city.
Okay.
Move continues?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is continued. P 37, and now?
Going to do procedures?
Yeah, we'll do our procedures now.
Rezoning procedures. There are two rezoning agendas, regular consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or Planning Commission has recommended approval, or if there is no opposition to the application, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or Planning Commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for a presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or Planning Commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case, that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's land development code.
Okay, do we have proof?
Work needs to swear in public?
Yes, swear in the public, and then?
Do you, any person intending to give testimony on any of the rezoning items that are to be heard, if you would please rise? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, so help you God? When you come forward to the podium to speak, for the record, please indicate whether you've been sworn, state your name and address, and spell out your last name, if you would, please. Thank you. Please be seated. For item P 37, we have proof of publication in the December 22nd, 2021 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
P 37 is PDD 227561. This is a zoning amendment, US Wholesale Pipe and Tube MPUD. It's for a change in zoning from a C2 general commercial district to an MPUD master plan unit development district. This is for development consistent with I1 light industrial park district uses. This comes through with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission, and it's with the approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item? If not, anyone online?
We have no one online.
Okay, we'll keep it on the consent. P 39, P 38, sorry.
P 38, we have proof of public, well, actually, this was published for the January 11th Board of County Commissioners meeting and continued at that time to be heard today.
I don't have that note.
P 38 is PDD 227573. It's a zoning amendment in the name of MHC Forest Lake Estates Expansion. It's for a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District, C2 General Commercial District, with specific uses, and ER2 Estate Residential District, to RMH Mobile Home District. This comes through with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department Commission.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item?
The only person we have signed up is representing, I believe, the applicant.
Well, if there's no one here in opposition, applicant might wave, and we'll keep it on consent. Okay. We'll keep it on consent, seeing no opposition. That is the extent of our consent agenda today. I'll take a motion.
Move approval?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you very much. P 41. No, P 40.
P 40 is the companion item to the one you just heard.
Okay.
On consent. And?
Hi, good afternoon. Wesley Hanks from Real Property and Planning. This is an agreement for exchange of real property of Gateway Drive requested by MHC Forest Lake Estates Expansion LLC. The developer is seeking approvals to develop its property and has proposed constructing a new alignment to connect CR 54 to Frontier Drive, which then connects to Marks Avenue. And upon completion of the Frontier Drive expansion, to exchange the newly constructed Frontier Drive extension with the Gateway Drive parcels. This is a sketch of the proposed land exchange from the developer. Along the western edge of the property is the proposed new Frontier Drive extension. The current alignment is south from County Road 54, where it then curves to the east along the southern boundary of the parcel and connects to Frontier Drive. The eastern edge of the parcel depicts the closure of Gateway Drive. The Pasco County-owned parcels of Gateway Drive are to be conveyed to the developer, and on the western side is the Frontier Drive extension that MHC will grant to Pasco County. A few key points to consider are MHC to obtain easement releases or terminate the agreement. The Frontier Drive extension is subject to site plan review. The new road is to be built by MHC, and Gateway Drive to be closed only after the new road is open. The team recommends approval. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to?
Applicant.
I know the applicant's here, but do you want to see if someone is here to object to this?
Madam Chair, Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA 109 North Brush Street, Tampa, Florida, have been sworn. I think we have a couple of residents that want to speak in favor of it. I just was going to say very briefly, the land swap agreement that you see on the agenda now was a product of a community meeting that we had almost two years ago before COVID started. Commissioner Oakley was present that night and the residents all told us that they really were in favor of creating a system that would create the possibility for a better view shed into their rural lots south of the project. And that's what this land swap is all about. We've spent a bunch of time and money working with the neighbors. And the only question after today is whether we can get the consent from the last few people who are holdouts. And I'm hoping after today's vote that you've already taken on the rezoning, that they will come along. If they don't, we will, we won't be able to finish the land swap and we'll have, you know, the road system more or less as it is today. Anyway, thank you.
Madam Chairman, before Mr. Hobby leaves, so, but you can move forward with a rezoning that was just approved, with or without.
That's right. We set it up both ways in case, because we realized about a year and a half ago that we had to get these private consents. So, we set it up so it could work either way. Thank you.
Mr. Stein, Senator, just to clarify the public notice on this, the notice that I have was actually for, and then there was the subsequent resolution that it was adopted by the board. So, how does that resolution cover this meeting?
Mr. Shumpel, I have the notice from the newspaper that we ran twice and it was continued last time. So, if you.
There's a continuance last time, it wasn't noted on my sheet, so maybe we should use. Okay, so the, this was continued from the January 11th meeting to this date and time?
Correct.
Okay. So, the notice was published for, on.
Continued from.
For, it was, it was published for the January hearing and then at the January hearing it was continued to today.
So, it was published in the December 26th and January 2nd, 22 editions of the Tampa Bay Times to be heard on the 11th and continued to the.
That's right.
Okay, just clarifying the record.
I understand.
And I have a question on that, just the county administrator. Shouldn't that be in, under our notes here? Shouldn't it say continued from? I mean, we used to do that. So, two of these now don't have that today in our agenda. But seems to me we used to have that record as well, that it was continued from. Okay, so do we have anyone wishing to speak to this item today?
This is item P40, and I do not have anyone on my list.
Here comes somebody.
Lady Kenna, I'd like to speak also.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Joanne Hopper. I live in Forest, excuse me, Frontier Drive Acres, which is affected by.
We need your address for the.
Yes, 5313 Sayer Lane, Zephyr Hills, 33540. I want to thank you all for letting me speak. And I'm interested in having the new road adopted. And the reason is because when you add 120 new homes, that is going to affect the ability of people to get in and out of the property, their own properties. So, there are 53 lots in Frontier Acres. And of those 52 homes are occupied and one home is going to be built. The remaining 37, there are only 15 people having the deeds of right of passage. The remaining 37 residents have a prescriptive right of passage in accordance with Florida law, considering the access to be a prescribed easement after 20 years. The present access road is through the middle of Forest Lake Mobile Home. They have generously offered us a new access road on their property to ease the burden of the traffic. Forest Lake is a retirement community. The residents of Frontier Acres are mostly working. And therefore, that will cause a real, as it is now, when the winter residents come back, I mean, it really is difficult to get out. And you add 120 more, it's going to really make it difficult. In addition to this, I believe that when a home does come up for sale in the development and they realize when they're selling this home, that the people who are looking at it have to go through a mobile home park and find the amount of traffic involved, that it would decrease their desire to buy the property and therefore decrease eventually the value of the homes there, which of course will decrease the taxes that you all receive. So, we would really appreciate it if you would be giving us some consideration to adopt the part of the plan that they have to put the road on the west side, or the east side of it. And I think there was more here. Oh, and it also said the deed of passage owners are required to maintain this access and that deed of passage owners have not maintained the access of this property for 20 years. But the non-deed passage holders have fixing the holes in the road and mowing it right away. A non-odor hat, I am requesting that since the majority of the users of the present road would like to have separate access to our homes. And there are 15 that have the deed of access, but only six are the people who are not willing to sign it over. The development, then we want to see if, time for me to go. But thank you very much.
Good job, very good job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Please come up, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bob Oris, O-R-O-S as in Sam, Z as in zebra. I live at 5306 Frontier Drive. And the meeting two years ago, Mr. Oakley was at the neighborhood, asked me to speak for them. And so, over the last two years, many arduous discussions. We live in tense times, has not gotten a democratic vote that would agree with this. Because the bottom 37, which don't have the deeds that have to be signed over, 35 of those 37 want it badly. Several of those people are here right now. On the top side of the 15, they have the deeds, they basically have the bottom half captive. Because unless they sign, it doesn't matter what anybody else thinks. So, my approach was to go to all of them and say, you know, don't we have an American flag? I mean, don't we think about things, what's best for all of us? Don't we think about what everyone wants? I understand if it's at 51%, but this is at 90%. Okay, but still, these six that won't sign are, have odd reasons. I'll give you some. The lights will shine in our windows differently. It will be unsafe for us to pull out from where we are, which was a whole nother discussion, how that means.
We hear that all the time.
I like watching traffic drive by my house. You are running, me, running for county commissioner or the mayor of Zephyr Hills. Both untrue, severely untrue, no offense. These are the things that have come back as reasons why they would not sign these deeds. And then lastly, two of them said, waive $10,000 or $15,000 in front of us from this billion-dollar company and we'll consider it. All of them are unacceptable in the way I think, ethically and every other way. All right, I'm happy to.
You have another minute. You have another minute.
But I believe, I firmly believe that equity has been over backwards to try to please the neighborhood. And the six people, strong six people, there's a couple that are being pulled one way or another. But the strong six people that don't want to are illogical. They're not considering anybody else. And these guys have been good. These guys have really tried to make it a win-win by saying, let's combine them together. Let's move you over here with the road. You'll have your own access, it'll look better, the road will be in repair as opposed to disrepair. There really should be a no-brainer. It's almost ridiculous to have to let the road go by the wayside, the new road, because six people are holding 53 captive. So, I don't know if there's anything I can do. I have three seconds, gladly be out.
Thank you very much.
But I appreciate everything you guys do.
Maybe now with these approvals, maybe they'll see the light. So, let's hope.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this? Is there anyone on Webex?
No.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes, I met with Bob and also Gordon Hyde in those community meetings and Mr. Hobby from two years ago. And we had several of those meetings, even one in the street one time with all the neighbors. And we worked very hard to try to meet the needs of everybody. And it finally was determined that we'd do this road on the west side of the mobile home park, where you wouldn't have to drive through the center. And it would give you a better access to your home for the estate properties in behind the Forest Lakes. And it's a very good settlement for them. And I appreciate all those that worked with us because they were very sensible. Bob and Gordon led that and Clark did all the work he can, he can do to get that to happen for us. Because at first, it wasn't something they were just willing to come out and build another road. But they finally agreed on that and that's the best result for the people in behind Forest Lakes, so.
And maybe those, the six holdouts will change their minds.
And with that, I would move approval.
Second.
Second, and with a quick discussion, aren't they also paving an additional one mile south of that at no cost to the homeowners and the residents? Because if we were, as he gave the scenario to waive the $10,000, if there was a PVAS out there, I'm sure the PVAS would cover costs probably about $10,000. So, the developer sound, and the applicant sounds like they're willing to pay that cost.
Nice. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. P41.
We have proof of publication in the December 22, 21 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Good afternoon, Leam Devine Planning and Development. Item P41, PDD 22-7579 in the name of distinct development Dade City slash Happy Hill Road. It is a zoning amendment from AR Agricultural Residential District to R1 Rural Density Residential District to a R4 High Density Residential District. The subject site is currently located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Happy Hill Road and Sarah Lynn Drive. This is a look at the aerial view. To the south and east of the subject site is the Sweetwater Apartment Complex. And to the north is mobile homes, mobile slash manufactured homes and single-family dwellings. The surrounding future land use to the north is Res 3 and Res 6. To the south and east is Res 6, and to the west is Res 1 and Res 6. The surrounding zoning to the north is R1, AR, and AC. To the east is AR and MF1. To the south is R1 and MF1. And to the west is R1 and AR. The subject site is currently undeveloped, consisting of hayfields on approximately 18.78 acres. The applicant proposes to develop the property with approximately 75 single-family detached dwelling units in conformance with the R4 High Density Residential District standards. The surrounding area is characterized by residential development and agricultural pursuits. The subject area has the future land use classification of Res 6 under the comprehensive plan. And, sorry, access to the property is from Happy Hill Road, a county-maintained collector road with approximately 66 feet of right-of-way. And this is coming with a recommendation for approval from Plant, from Planning Commission and PDD staff.
Thank you. And here we have the applicant.
Board members, Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA. I think we only have one objector on this matter, is one neighbor. Again, just would point out on this site, it's a very small site. Even though the R4 zoning that's at issue could yield about 75 units, in reality, it'll only be either 51 or 52, which is basically under the Res 3 future land use density. And this site has Res 6. The site was never in the northeast Pasco rural area. There's been multifamily to the immediate south of the site for over 20 years. So, we feel by going to Euclidian District and not seeking 40 or even 50-foot lots, what we're doing is in keeping with the area. And we don't believe we'll have an inordinate burden on Happy Hill Road. And our transportation, or our timing and phasing analysis shows that there's adequate capacity there. Just a reminder for those of you all who live on West Pasco, the city of Dade City has annexed several projects within about a mile or so of the site. There'll be about 1,000 or 2,000 units that are being built primarily by D.R. Horton up there. So, this project will have a de minimis impact compared to that. Jeff, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have anyone signed up to speak to this item?
Alisa Weaver. Ms. Weaver, if you would, just to acknowledge that you were sworn and you have your name and address for the record.
Yes, I was sworn. Alisa Weaver, 12843 Happy Hill Road, Dade City, 33525. W E A V E R. Thank you for letting me address my concerns about rezoning the property on Happy Hill Road. I guess my question is, how did the zoning change on Happy Hill Road positively affect the health, safety, welfare, welfare of our surrounding community? The rezoning of this parcel to I4 hard density is not really consistent with much of the area. The majority of the properties in the surrounding area are a minimum of one acre and quite a few larger parcels of 10 or more acres. Changing one parcel to R4 is, would be a detriment to the surrounding residents. We live a rural lifestyle and not looking for close neighbors. The additional lights, noise, traffic will have a negative impact on the rural lifestyle that I love and would like to keep. The traffic is a major concern. The Happy Hill Road's been a scenic two-lane rural road. With the current conditions, it is a steady stream of traffic, with many going well over the 45 and 35 mile per hour speed limits that's posted. Visibility is, I would consider is low, being the speed that people travel on the road. I've been run off the road, there's accidents, vehicles going through my fences on a regular occurrence. It's been stated that a traffic study has been completed and that Happy Hill Road showed sufficient capacity for this and additional developments further to the north. That's truly difficult to believe if you travel Happy Hill Road. Has the county completed a traffic study or only the engineers hired by the developer? I think it's time for Pasco County to get smart with their progressive development and not just say yes to additional development. Now is the time to support your current and long-term Pasco County homeowners and residents before allowing more high-density development. I ask you to deny this proposal for the parcel on Happy Hill Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this? Is there anyone else online that would, wants to speak to this?
We have no one online.
Okay, then, does applicant want to respond?
And Madam Chair, if I might just, and I won't belabor it, but you could argue that the proposal before you is not compatible with the area because we don't have a high enough density. There's an apartment complex right next to us. So, we're going way down from the apartment complex from what is effectively something, it's at 15, 18 units per acre to under three. With regard to the level of service and the transportation, we have to follow the code and the methodology that the county requires our transportation engineer to follow. And the study that was done, the timing and phasing analysis that the county staff reviewed and approved, showed that the adopted level of service for this area is clearly met and that the level of service with our project on there is only B, as in boy. There aren't a lot of county roads with that low of a level of service anymore in the county. So, I feel what we're doing is wholly consistent with the area. I'm proud of it. We didn't ask for super small lots and I think it'll be a credit to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Oakley, your district?
Yep, it fits in the property fairly well when you're right next to apartments like that, like Mr. Hobby spoke of and not asking for, they're not asking for 40-foot lots and things of that nature, which would be very dense and very crowded. So, that and the fact that the traffic study shows that there's availability on Happy Hill Road. So, with that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is approved and now we. It is approved, and now we are on to forty-two.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, this matter was continued from the Board of County Commissioners on January eleventh.
Oh.
Just a moment, please.
Let me ask you a question. On that one that we did before you guys got the advertising right, it was all fine?
Yes.
Clark's other one? Okay, because I turned off my mic, but I knew you were having some discussion, because I think Clark had his proof, if we needed it, so. Yeah, that's why I'm kind of checking.
Yeah, the resolution that Mr. Sample had in the package was, indicated that it was for January eleventh. This board took action on January eleventh to continue it, so hearing today was appropriate for that.
And again, on this particular matter, this was published in the Tampa Bay Times on November twenty-fourth for the meeting of January the eleventh for a hearing, and then continued to this date.
All right. Thank you. Valerie Brookins with the Planning and Development Department. Today is case number PDD twenty-two zero eight-eight, is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment under the name CPAL twenty-one-ten, North Pasco RV Resort. This shows the location. It is in the North Market area, as well as the northeast Pasco rural area. It is along I-seventy-five, east of Lake Iola, and south of Blanton Road. The proposal's to amend the future land use map two-dash-fifteen, Sheet seven, from AG, AR Agricultural Rule to PD Plan Development, contains approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-two acres, and to allow for RV resort with a maximum of five-hundred-and-fifty RV spaces. As I stated, it's along I-seventy-five, east of Lake Iola Road, and south of Blanton. Resolution is to amend the future land use maps two-fifteen, Sheet seven, and create a sub-area policy seven-point-one-point-six-three, North Pasco RV Resort, and amend the future land use map two-dash-nine, creating sub-area two-dash-nine-six-three, North Pasco RV Resort. There is also a master plan development rezoning proposal that'd be required to implement the standards in the sub-area policy. This shows existing future land use, which is the agricultural rule. The proposed to go to PD. And this shows the conceptual plan. And the following policies were found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Policy flew one-point-six-point-one, commercial development. Policy flew two-point-one-five, protection of existing topography. Policy flew two-point-one-nine, rural lighting standards. Policy flew two-point-one-eleven, rural residential roads. Policy flew two-point-one-point-thirteen, provision of potable water in Santeri Sewer. On January sixth, the local planning agency recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners, and staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and authorize transmittal to DEO and other review agencies.
Okay, I think we have the applicant coming up now, and applicant has requested and been granted some extra time.
Good afternoon, Barbara Willhite, twenty-three, excuse me, sixty-three-twenty-seven, Grand Boulevard, Newport, Ritchie, three-four-six-five-two. While they're bringing up our first PowerPoint, I have a few things I'd like to have the board receive and file. We have some handouts with some exhibits at the dais. The clerk's been, has a copy of that as well. We have our two PowerPoints, my PowerPoint and Frances Chandler Moreno's PowerPoint that they have, they're electronic. We have a comp plan analysis and a zoning analysis, hard copy, and Frances Chandler Moreno's resume. If we could receive and file.
Please receive and file.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number one? No, yeah, it starts with a picture. Thank you. I have my project team here. Everybody's healthy and here, can't say that all the time. Joe Semenow from WRA, Steve Henry and Aliyah Teffy from Lynxson Associates, Greg Mayfield from Southern Water, who is working with us on our wastewater treatment facility, the Frances Chandler Moreno, Brian Nolan from Lucido and Associates, our landscape architect. Proud to have them all here, they've been a wonderful team, and I'd like to tell you about North Pasco RV Resort. This is the transmittal hearing of the comprehensive plan amendment. We will be back before you, assuming you vote to move forward today. We'll be back before you on April fifth for the comp plan adoption hearing, as well as the MPUD zoning hearing. Project history, we've been working on this for a couple of years now. Looks like it's an anniversary of our submittals on the nineteenth of February. We first started out with six-hundred-and-seventy-five RV spaces, which was kind of a guess. We were in the land use and zoning world of, you know, we didn't know all of our design details. Went to our first neighborhood meeting on September tenth, twenty-nineteen, had about a hundred people there. It was at Lake Javita, a lot of interest. And a lot of questions were very specific, and we wanted to be able to answer those questions. And so, we slowed down and hired this wonderful team to join the project, and went through a lot of details, and through that, we realized that our RV resort would have five-hundred-and-fifty spaces. And we had a second neighborhood open house on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, less people. And before that open house, we did a community outreach website, sent that notice to everybody within a thousand feet, and every person that attended that neighborhood meeting got the link to our community outreach website, which had a lot of information on it. We did that so that a lot of times with projects like this, it's kind of, somebody tells somebody, tells somebody, tells somebody, and the facts get lost. So, we want to make sure the facts were out there. This is located along I-seventy-five, south of the Blanton Road interchange, the first interchange, when you come south on I-seventy-five into Pasco County. I-seventy-five, that location has forty-eight-thousand-five-hundred vehicles per day in twenty-twenty volumes, a lot of people coming into Pasco County. Our resort's kind of a minimum of ten-thousand square feet of resort lodge and clubhouse facilities, maximum of five-hundred-and-fifty RV spaces. They can accommodate RVs, yurts, Airstreams, or resort cottages, so if you don't have your own vehicle to drive in, or, excuse me, own RV to drive in or pull in, you can rent a resort cottage, yurt, or Airstream, unlike a hotel room, and enjoy the resort that way as well. We have no density, no dwelling units, no permanent attachments to our RVs, yurts, Airstreams, or resort cottages, and our project cannot be so divided. This is not density, these are not lots, these are not dwelling units. Looking at our project and how it compares to other projects in the county, from a RV spaces per acre, lowest RV spaces per acre at four-point-six-six RV spaces per acre, Quell Run to our south is about double, a little less than double of that, I-seventy-five frontage, Three Lakes RV, you can see the, you know, I don't need to read them to you, you can see the different RV spaces per acre of different projects. Most recently, Anquippa Resort was approved, and a little bit more RV spaces per acre, but you can see that as we design these better, the RV spaces per acre are coming down. And that's what Quell Run looks, Quell Run looks like, at almost double the RV spaces per acre, and that's how it's amenitized. We have no full-time residents, and our resort cottages cannot be homesteaded. Our maximum occupancy in any twelve-month period shall be less than six months. And the question came up at Planning Commission, well, how do you know? Well, the state, because on these types of projects, the state has a tourist tax, and they have taxes that they want to collect, and so they make sure that you have to do a guest register, as the state requirement, and to prove that people are only staying no more than six months. Six months is the state law definition of transient, and so that's what we follow. That's what all the RV parks follow. And our guest register will include license plate verification, which is, how do you know that the wife didn't sign the register for six months, and then the husband signed the register for six months? Well, you verify the license plates. I've always been asked, whenever I go to RV park, I have to show them my license plate on my RV. And at the county's request, I think we're only supposed to, the state statute has a less time than three years to maintain that log. The county's request, we're going to maintain that register for longer. We've opened it up to the Pasco County, the tax collector, or the school board, if they want to check to make sure those state rules are being followed. After our first neighborhood meeting, we hired a private wastewater treatment facility design, some folks to do that. We do have a private wastewater treatment facility planned. It's going to serve only the resort, cannot be expanded, and it's maintained by the resort owner. We prepared a topological survey, we hired a landscape architect, Brian Nolan, who is here, he did the wonderful materials that are, together with Don Feresi Studios, who did some of the renderings, did the wonderful plan that you have in front of you, all exceeding the code, because the code doesn't require a plan like that. We are, a couple of highlights of our conceptual site plan, and Brian is here, you know, if you want to talk to him more. We looked at, I asked my team, you know, there's a lot of green space on here, what is the green space? And they said about fifty percent is green space, open space, and that's not including the RV space, green space, and landscaped areas. And I asked them, tell me about these paths and nature walk, because there's extensive, and they're about two miles, which is about the distance I like to run, so it's perfect for me. This is our concept plan, very thoughtfully laid out. Our amenity is centralized. Most resorts probably would have put it down by the lake. We made our area down by the lake passive, no motorized vehicles. Rendering of our resort lodge, rendering of our RV spaces. We designed our Lake Iola corridor buffer, which you do have in your handouts as well, to well exceed the standards for northeast Pasco. You do have a corridor buffer requirement for your scenic roads in your land development code, applies to residential development. We took that and we exceeded it. As you can see, our firm at the base is forty-eight feet wide. The LDC buffer is twenty-five, it's at grade twenty-five feet. We have thirteen qualifying trees per hundred linear feet. The land development code is four. Our trees are four inches, land development code's three, and the trees are, our trees are twelve feet high, and the land development code's eight. We also designed an internal master landscape tree plan, which there's no LDC requirement for. If we would just followed your code, we would have put buffers around, like other parks, put buffers around, and put some plants around our clubhouses. We designed RV spaces landscape tree plan, again, no requirement for those. We'll specifically go over those, if you want to hear about today, that's fine, but we can specifically go over those in more detail at our next hearing, which actually is the hearing on the MPUD, where these details are more relevant. But I wanted to get you an idea of what we've done and what the quality of the project is. This is the corridor buffer cross-section, a hundred-foot cross, a hundred-foot setback from the right-of-way of Lake Iola today to the first RV spaces. This is the rendered master landscape plan, the plant plan, these are the RV space details of how we're going to landscape our RV spaces. We did, after listening to the neighborhood, we prohibited the launching of motorized vehicles on Moody Lake. We limited the recreational uses adjacent to the lake to passive. We prepared an updated transportation analysis. We committed to northbound and southbound turn lanes on Lake Iola Road, although not warranted, so RVs will get out of the lane of travel. We met with county staff about the Blanton Road-Lake Iola intersection, which Mr. Commissioner Oakley also attended those meetings. We added things to our sub-area policies, which is relevant to the discussion today, because you're considering transmittal of the comp plan. We were, the recreational uses we've talked about, requirement for cutoff luminaries, landscape and tree preservation buffers, Lake Iola corridor buffer, prohibitions of chain-link fences, preservation of existing native vegetation, hundred-foot setback, I mentioned, no mining, and regulations on grading. Didn't all, didn't create these all myself. These are regulations from your land development code that you adopted for residential development, and we, you have not done your, your commercial code for northeast Pasco, your non-residential code, so we put all those provisions into the comp plan to make them regulatory. And then we had Frances Chandler Moreno take a look at our applications and our documents and make an independent determination of whether we were consistent with the comp plan, and whether we met the requirements to zone the property as requested. Something that we did not present to Planning Commission, because we could see the comments, we do get copies of the comments that are sent to the county, and there were quite a few comments about the use of bicycles in this area. And so, we, so we took a look at that, and our project is, well, right here. So, you can see there's a common bike path people use, bike route, excuse me. Comes up Lake Iola Road, underneath the interstate, along our frontage, up to the road here. Ranch, Bay Ranch Road, wait a minute, I know the name, just doing a blank. Bayhead Road, excuse me. It's right there in front of me. And so, we looked at that, and we do share the road with bicycles when we, our RVs exit and go north on Lake Iola. Our entrance is at Johnston, and Bayhead is one intersection up, so we would be sharing the road as we go north, our RVs are our traffic. So, in considering that, we looked at your Northeast Pasco Multimodal Safety Action Plan twenty-eighteen that AECOM did, and we looked at what their recommendations were for shoulders. And they recommend shoulders as a technique to be able to have traffic and bikes basically share the road, and kind of expand the road, so there's room for both. The standard is four feet wide, and that's the recommended shoulder width in that study. When you're going uphill, side to side, uphill side is steep grades, when, you know, you do this to your bike to try to get up, they recommend six. So, we don't have any steep grades like that along this stretch of Lake Iola Road, but we are proposing a six-foot wide, instead of the minimum four that the study recommended, on the east side of Lake Iola from, and we could just start at Johnston and just go to Bayhead, because that's where we share the road. But we wanted to have, we've spent a lot of detail on this project, and we want to have a consistent front of our project. So, we're starting that shoulder further south as you come up Lake Iola, under the interstate, then on the, be on your right-hand side as you're biking, the shoulder will start then and go up to Bayhead. Bayhead is off-site, so there'll be a section of, that will go up on the east side of Lake Iola, past Johnston, which is our entrance, up to Bayhead, which is off-site, and then the bicycles turn left on Bayhead. We also are going to make sure we incorporate, and obviously, your traffic operations staff will help us with this, we need a right-of-way permit, but we're going to, I did know, we did notice in the study that an edge strip with audible pavement markers, a rumble stripping is another thing that you add when you do these types of shoulders. This is a graphic that shows what I tried to verbally depict to you. And that's the end of my presentation. I have Frances Chandler Moreno wants to go through the comp plan consistency with you, and our team is here to talk further.
I knew she'd be wearing some, some kind of shoe. I had to let. She has the best shoe collection ever.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Frances Chandler Moreno, M-A-R-I-N-O, one-two-three-nine Fruit Cove Road North, St. John's, Florida, and I have been sworn. Again, thank you. As Barbara mentioned, she had contacted me and asked me to review the application that you have before you, to assess whether or not it was consistent with the comprehensive plan. To do that, I prepared a report that includes the entirety of my assessment, and so, as this presentation, I want to summarize what that includes. The standard of review that I used for consistency is established by Florida statute, so that's the standard that I used. It's supplemented by Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. Your plan also provides provisions for how it should be reviewed and what constitutes consistency. So, those are the two things that I used to make that determination. The comprehensive plan establishes a protocol for how you review and present that information, and it's done in four parts. So, that's how my report is set up, and that's also how this presentation is set up. The four parts that you're required to look at is the general comprehensive plan review. The four parts that you're required to look at is the general comprehensive plan review itself. In this particular case, it contains two parts, a general compatibility review, and then a review specifically with the policies of the Northeast Pasco rural area. The second part of the review is relative to natural resources and natural features. The third is general public facilities and services, and the fourth is transportation. I have no idea how this works. The first item is compatibility under the comprehensive plan review. The first thing that I looked at was the location and the adjacencies for the subject site. It is located in an area where the predominant existing use is agriculture, vacant, some large lot residential, and the predominance is Interstate 75. As I looked at the compatibility for this site, it is the location of the interstate and the proximity from that site to the interchange with Blanton Road that most informed my determination of compatibility. The interstate is a multi-lane interstate facility. As Barbara pointed out, it carries 48,500 cars a day today. That's a very intensive existing use on its two adjacencies, the adjacency to the east and the south. So that informed the general use of an RV park next to the interstate. More specifically, as related to the intensity of that use, what informed my decision about consistency was that it was being requested under a planned development. That's important and relevant, because the comprehensive plan establishes planned developments in a specific way. It requires them to have MPUD zoning. And it requires that MPUD zoning to be pursuant to a specific master development plan. In that way, any other adjacencies can be regulated specifically. In this case, the application addressed the compatibility for all of the adjacent, adjacencies that it has in two ways, also important. So not simply is it included in the MPUD zoning commitments as is required for a PUD, but it also included a subarea policy text amendment. That's important, because the very specific compatibility and design provisions that were established in the MPUD zoning is actually being embedded into the comprehensive plan. For me, that was significant, because it requires any revision to those to require a plan amendment. So it's a more secure way to ensure that that compatibility is maintained over time. Specifically, the compatibility commitments that were included to address those adjacencies included undisturbed, undeveloped, and landscape buffers along the western and northwestern boundary and along I-75. It increased size and opacity of screening through the berm along Lake Iola Road. It increased the setbacks that were required, that, in addition to those that were required along Lake Iola Road. There is no residential density permitted on this site. It is defined under the comprehensive plan that defines commercial uses as a commercial use. RV parks are a commercial use under the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. And the compatibility commitments and standards are, are going to be adopted as part of the comp plan itself. The second part of the comprehensive plan review that I did was to look at the North Pasco Rural Area policies. The North, although I reviewed all of the policies in that goal that represents the Northeast Pasco rural area, there are four types of policies that have some potential to impact development review. Those include those that ensure that the timing and location for any increase in residential density is limited. So there's a lot of policies in the rural area plan that speak directly to increased residential density. The second is design direction. Although your comprehensive plan does not include any development regulations, it does provide direction to the land development code in the form of requiring the code to include those. And it can sometimes specify what those are. So there is some design direction in those policies. There are policies that restrict infrastructure in Northeast Pasco in order to limit the number of lanes and create certain limitations for extending central water and central sewer. And then fourth, there were policies that limit changes in grade to protect the rolling topography of that area. Out of all of the policies that I reviewed relative to the rural area, there are only four that were tangentially applicable to this site. I say tangential, because they relate most directly to residential, but they do provide design direction. And the applicant had included a, a response to those as a more restrictive way to address that, and so I reviewed that in that case. Those four, it starts with Policy FLU 2.1.5, which is the protection of existing topography. That policy is implemented through the land development code, specifically Section 604.5. That, the code has two specific ways that it directs the protection of topography. One is it limits the grading on a piece of property so that you cannot change it by more than a certain percentage, and it restricts mining. This application addressed both of those provisions inasmuch as it restricted a grading within a slope of 10%, as required by the land development code, and provided a commitment that there would be no mining on this site. So it addressed both of the things that the code had included. The second policy was Policy FLU 2.1.9, relative to rural lighting standards. That policy is implemented through the land development code, Section 604.5F. That provision provides specific standards for lighting. And the application that I reviewed met that standard by also requiring the cutoff luminaries, as required by the land development code. The third policy was Policy 2.1.11, Rural Residential Roads. That policy is actually implemented through the land development code, Section 604.4C1. There are several provisions to this, in terms of how you protect rural residential roads, that relates to corridor tree preservation of a certain size and larger, requiring that a buffer be preserved. It also has certain standards in there for how that buffer is to be established. The application included commitments for each and every one of those meeting or exceeding that standard provided in the code in terms of tree preservation, introducing a landscape berm of a six-foot height with the four-to-one side slopes, and the average, the approximate 48-feet width at the base, and then the landscaping along those berms. That section also provides provisions relative to building setbacks from the adjacent scenic road corridor, and the application met that setback. In addition, it speaks to fences and walls along the rural residential roads. It prohibits certain type of fences and requires others. In the application, they also prohibited the chain link fences, the opaque walls, all the things that were required in the code, they also included in their commitments. Policy FLU 2.1.13, Provision of Potable Water and Sanitary Sewer. It is not implemented through a code. It's merely a policy that does not allow the extension of central services into the rural area. As such, this application did not propose to extend central services into the area, but rather would provide an onsite package plant system and well. The second area that was to be reviewed was natural resources. The plan calls out the specific natural resources that are to be evaluated, wellhead, surface, and groundwater, wetlands, critical linkages, habitats, and historic and archaeological sites. The application did not identify any feature, cultural feature that would be impacted by the development, and it included commitments to address the protection of other environmental features in this manner. As it related to gopher tortoise, 100% of the gopher tortoise survey conducted according to the Particular Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission guidelines. There was restriction to construction activities within the wetland up-in buffer, as depicted on the construction plans. The copy of the Water Management District Environmental Resource Permit will be sent to the Planning and Development Department when it's completed. And if during construction, any evidence of any state or federal protected plant or animal species is discovered, all work in that area shall come to an immediate stop until the permits have been obtained. The third area was related to general public facilities. That included water and sewer and stormwater. As said, the water will be provided by private well, and the wastewater will be provided by the package plant. The applicant has proposed specific conditions to comply with the stormwater requirements of Pasco County. And finally, transportation. A transportation analysis was conducted. Barbara went through that specifically with you. There's, it will operate within the adopted level of service with the background traffic and the addition of the project traffic. And they have proposed a 315-foot northbound right turn lane and 415-foot southbound turn lane, left turn lane on Lake Iola Road, even though that was not required by the warrants, simply because of the, the size of the RVs that would be pulling in there. They wanted to make sure that there was clearance. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have now or later.
For members, any questions?
No?
Good. Thank you.
Ms. Will Hyde, I believe the folks that are on this list are probably other members of your team. Steve Henry. Ben Rayman.
So Commissioners, that concludes our presentation. We have our members here for rebuttal, depending on what the questions might be. But if you want to open up for public hearing, that'll be fine.
I just wanted to make sure these that were signed up on this list were part of your team and not others wanting to speak, correct?
Yes, so I heard Steve Henry.
Brian Nolan.
Yes.
And Joe Chimo.
Joe Simino. Simino, yes, they're here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will go to public comment. We have a list.
Yes, we do. John Russell.
Good afternoon. John Russell, 17810 Highland Lane, Dade City, 33523. I am duly sworn.
Thank you, sir.
So. I am, I've been a resident of Pasco County for more than 20 years. I'm a healthcare professional. I provide care to people who reside in various RV parks as part of my clientele. And I can tell you without question, I am well acquainted with that, the area in question. And an RV park, of which I'm very familiar, Zephyr Hills has loads of them. This is no place to put in an RV park, for multiple, multiple reasons. I'll give a first one for consideration. About a month, month and a, maybe five weeks ago, within a mile of the proposed project, I personally saw a Florida panther. Okay? And I'm willing to swear on that. Couldn't take a picture, because it ran across the street in front of me. But it, without question, was a Florida panther. Points to consider, how does this project benefit current residents and wildlife? Does it restrict the free movement of wildlife? I think there's no question about that, that it, it does not benefit the people who live there. When you start, you know, pouring concrete, putting in pads to mount some 40-foot-long RVs, it's an eyesore. And when we talk about lighting, well, lighting, they're going to have a 15,000-square-foot ban shell or something as part of this project. I think I get more than, more than, more than one minute, correct? Right?
You have a minute left.
What's that? I have a minute left, okay. The references for RV resorts, none of which were in Pasco County. The property tax revenue from this project versus maintaining one and five-acre lots is insubstantial compared to if we just left it to the same zoning. This is really a degradation or desecration of a very scenic area. I would like to, I'd like to know how we define topography. And quite frankly, these, these presentations that were provided by the people representing the developer, they were laughable at best. John Russell, have my MBA. I am, I am a well-educated person who cares about the quality of Pasco County. And this is not a quality development. Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, next.
I forgot to mention insiders, working on behalf of the insiders and developers. I've watched it for 20 years.
Thank you very much.
Sasha, Julia.
If you, if you guys do that, we have three bailiffs here, and we're going to escort you out, because that's, that's not kosher. Name an address for the record, please.
I'm Julia Sasha Bartunick. I live at 2645 Meadowwood. That's all one word, Meadowwood Drive, New Poritchi, Florida 34655. And I'm affiliate with the Sierra Club Pasco Conservation Committee. I'd like to say that green spaces are Pasco County's most valuable resources. I'm speaking against this development in this northeast rural area that needs to remain protected. And my opposition to this takes precedence over all the other following comments that I will make.
I apologize for interrupting. Do you acknowledge that you were sworn?
I am sworn, thank you, sir. I'd like to reinforce that having a traffic corridor anywhere does not necessitate high-density levels behind it, around it. You can have scenic corridor around high-traffic corridors. In fact, the county has done that already, for example, at the Starkey Ranch. How wonderful if we could preserve upon entry to Pasco County this wonderful view of God-given green rolling hills. The visitors and new residents to Pasco could feel uplifted upon entry. These green spaces help mental health. They help productivity in both schools, students, and workplaces. They help mental health, and they help productivity, and they also reduce mental illness, and they also prevent suicide. I'd also like to say that there were several notes that were not mentioned that are in our comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does encourage more use of native species in all developments. Also, in our comprehensive plan, it talks about renewable, saving our resources, so that we should also have in any developments, and hopefully this development will not go in that area. Not against the specific development, but definitely in that area. But hopefully, all our developments can have solar, EV, charging stations, walkable communities. And also, I really love this idea that I heard at another commission meeting of having bikeable communities interlocking throughout Pasco County. Pasco County could become noted, because Pasco County could become noted because people come here because we have green spaces left, not just to make money, they come here for peace of mind. And they also need dark skylighting in developments such as this. And I would love to see Pasco County becoming like the 12th most bikeable county in the United States. That would something to be really proud of, and we've all already made strides with that in some of the trails that we've developed. Thank you for letting me share. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next, we have?
Lisa Moretti.
Did we skip this person?
That was for a different new item.
Oh, okay. And Lisa has requested extra time and has five minutes.
Thank you. I have a written statement that I'd like to submit into the record. Madam Chairman, I have a copy for each commissioner.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Should we present here?
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I met with the resident salesman, met with the developer, or the applicant.
Same. Okay.
Also, I had an ex parte form for Commissioner Fitzpatrick. It's cut, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. You don't have to wait for this.
Okay. My name is Lisa Moretti. I reside at 16331 Lake Iola Woods Trail, Dade City, and I am sworn. So, I'm going to speak very fast because I, obviously, I gave you quite a packet. I'm going to just try to summarize things for you in three, in the five minutes that I have. I further want to make sure that my, my comments are in the public record in the event that we need to pursue legal action against the county. So, the county has invested a significant amount of taxpayer monies on studies from Gladys Jackson, the Urban Land Institute, and the time and services of our own planning department. Those plans have helped guide the country and county in creating a fiscal plan as well as its land use plans. On January 6th of 2022, Ms. Marino was paid by Ms. Willhite on behalf of the developer to testify to the planning commission that the RV park fits in the natural, in the rural, sorry, the rural plan perfectly, and that you should disregard the urban density prohibitions in the rural area protections because I-75 travels next to the property where the proposed development is to be. She testified that because of the traffic volumes on the road abutting the property, you should allow high-density development, that's not residential and not commercial, to move forward, especially, this is especially distressing considering that Ms. Marino was the one that helped craft the Northeast Rural Plan, and that was not mentioned in 2006. So, that didn't sound quite right to me. So, I approached various national agencies to find out what were best practices in planning. I found out that a traffic corridor does not have to dictate a high-density surrounding area, and that a scenic corridor can be an alternative. In fact, the county has done precisely this. Then I looked into Transit Oriented Development, TOD, and concentrating density at interchanges, which other people have spoken about today. The RV park does not qualify for this type of need because it is considerably distant from the interchange. It's 1.3 miles. And you have no interconnected roadway system, you have no services, multimodal services that you'd be supplying out of the interchange area to the RV park. So, this is just a move to put density next to the interstate just because of density. So, with regard to the Urban Land Institute's recommendations, we also heard a little bit about this earlier, you have urban service areas, urban transition service areas in order to thwart urban sprawl. This is important because in 2013, you used those recommendations to craft the fiscal and land use plans of the county. At that time, the Urban Land Institute said you were already oversaturated for absorption based on what your development prognosis was at that point, and that you would encounter a $14 billion shortfall. So, asking for, just in providing the mandated services of that infrastructure. So, we already know that growth doesn't pay for itself, and I can cite you volumes of studies about that, but you don't need it. The Northeast Rural Area serves a purpose beyond community protection. It is your failsafe. By not having to provide services and infrastructure into the rural area, you are balancing your budget. And so, I would argue that you're legally obligated not to change the herbal, urban transition service area and not to move urban into the northwest rural area, or, I'm sorry, the northeast rural area. Let's see, some of the best planning experts in the country created a plan for you, gave you dire warnings about exactly what Ms. Marino, the developer, and Ms. Willhite are advocating for you to do. If you are not going to follow those recommendations, why do we have a comprehensive plan? Why spend our money on studies, reports, and documents? Why put us at further fiscal risk and put the county itself at legal and fiscal exposure when if you were to just follow the long-range plan and preserve the rural area, you're doing exactly the job of protecting the county? Ms. Willhite has a responsibility to the developer that pays her. Ms. Marino has a responsibility to whoever's paying her fees at this point. V Care Consultants and Sanjay Men have no ties to this community, unlike our local developers. He'll be out of the picture soon enough when he flips this property, just like he did in Sarasota, and he moves on to the next one of the Oakley properties he's purchased. He has no responsibility to the properties in this area, and he is not a steward of the land. None of these people have a right to have an increase in zoning or density or a massive comprehensive plan change. It is a request that you can say no to if you have the integrity to do so. In 2019, I asked Mr. Ammon to sit down with the community and create a project that was more aligned with the vision of the community. He offered to do my landscaping in return for my support. I chose not to betray my neighbors for a few shrubs. This project could be developed with a rural appeal, a barn, turning half of the spaces into horse trailer pads, putting in a pasture instead of a water feature. You could lower the density to an acceptable level, maintain the rural character, create a portal to Pasco County that was inviting and rural rather than a hillside covered with RVs and concrete. But Mr. Ammon couldn't be bothered to seek out our input. He's only going to do what he wants to do to us, and he says, "Sorry, it's going to be so painful for you."
Is that three minutes or five, the five minutes?
That was my five.
That's what? Oh, that's five. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, who do we have? No, you cannot. Hey, you ladies know that. Okay, you cannot do that here. Thank you.
Richard Riley.
I'd like to submit to the record.
Steve.
Oh, I didn't. Richard.
Mr. Riley.
I have been sworn.
No, you don't have to be sworn in for this.
I am Richard Riley, R-I-L-E-Y, 20235 Old Trilby Road. I have a motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. And don't wait for her to pass those out. You go, go ahead. You can go ahead and start.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want you to use up your time.
Greetings. Thank you for this opportunity to tell you how to do your job in reference to the proposed RV park in Northeast Rural, Protected Northeast Pasco County. I live in Trilby. I'm a member of the Northeast Pasco Concerned Citizens, and I want to protect our part of the county. Commissioner Moore, you've been here since 19, since 2014, and I'm sorry to hear that you feel you have to move on to another life. I've appreciated your open, humorous, sharing personality and giving nature. I am pleased that some of your legacy was that you slowed the growth in the mass construction of townhouses and apartments in your district that makes Pasco a bedroom community of Tampa Bay. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, you're new and have a good future, and if we're able to work with you in controlling growth like you appear to be doing. Madam Chair Starkey, since 19, since 2021, I thank you for your active support of trails, bikes, and pedestrian needs and opportunities for the entire county. Your support, environmental concerns are, make you a green woman. Mr. Mariano, you've been here forever. Specifically, you've been a supporter since 2004 and an advisor to our membership many times. Whenever we get lost in the bureaucracy, you have helped. Commissioner Oakley, since 2010, you're a district run commissioner. Our rural protected area is completely in your area, and you are vocal in your support of the well-being of your district. Acting Clerk, Mr. Samples, thank you for your organization's countywide support. To us, you document, record, publicize, and advertise the activities of this body, and you'll hold a wonderful group wedding on the courthouse steps next Monday. Attorney Steinsider, you protect the commission and the county from lawsuits by making sure that the actions here are legal. And County Manager Miles, your duties are extensive in keeping this county running and together. Wow, I'm going right up. And it runs into the details that are massive and inclusive. You had the duty to implement everything that these board members do. Thank you for the first two minutes of my Rural Protection Agency. I am not going to talk about details. I want to appeal to your integrity, your dignity, your sense of fair play. You don't have to approve every growth in here just because you, they want it. You have to acknowledge zoning, of course, but this is a change. This is a major change. This is changing it from on, on, something like 13 people to 550 people in one swoop. You, I'm running out of time, and so that, that is, that is a summary.
Still have a minute?
I'm sorry? No, but this thing here says zero.
Oh, it says zero. Oh, there you are, zero. All right, you were right. I was wrong.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, where are we?
Joanne Hopper. Is there any other?
All right, come on up.
Would it be John?
Well, let's see who's signed up first, so.
Yeah.
That's okay. Well, let, everyone who wants to speak can speak, but we're just going by our list.
Jay Hopper, 52.
Are we, so, is it?
I've been sworn in. My name is Dot Wood, and who I remember the most is Jack.
Wait, wait, wait. Address for the record, please.
17604 Spring Valley Road. Well, when we did the comprehensive plan, the RV park was there, and we grandfathered it in. And when we did that, we said, "No more, just what was there," because we did not want Lake Iola polluted, like a lot of other lakes in Pasco County from the sewer systems. And you will all remember that. Am I wrong? And that's all I got to say.
Carol Cruz, 17500 Spring Valley Road, Dade City, Florida. Okay, I listened to the ladies and gentlemen talk about the, what they want to add to it, and from what I'm gathering, it's 131 acres, and 50% of it is open space. So, 50% from 132 acres would be 66 acres. Now, you have to put your buffers in your roads, and I'm giving them 16 acres to do that. So, that means you have 50 acres left on this RV park, where you're going to put 550 RV, that is, according to the state, when you study it, you have a minimum of five per acre on a normal average RV park, or you have up to maximum nine. So, if I studied this and looked at this right, that means they're asking for nine RVs. That's the maximum of what most RV parks are. And this is the rural area. So, come on, guys. There's no way that you, any of you here can say, "Oh, that's fine." The people that live in the rural area want to live in the rural area. The people that want to live in the city, they can live in the city. We don't choose to live in the city. We choose to live in the rural area. So, give us, we the people, what we want. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else here that would wish to speak to this? You can come up now. Name an address, and you don't have to be sworn.
Hi, my name is JP Lyons, Jimmy Lyons. I live on Bayhead Road, and I'm right in the middle of this district of the Northeast Rural Protection Community. And I moved here in 96. I moved up from Tampa. And I love this area because it was so much like Mobile, the Ro, that's my hometown, the rolling hills, the beautiful oaks. They're being assaulted, and this place is trying, it feels like it's being turned into Newport Richie or Brandon. And we have the most beautiful land here ever, and that area is right in the middle of it. And the orange grove, I think the greening has affected the orange grove, the grove owners, they want to get their developments because they can't grow oranges, they don't want to redo it. So, there's been a major change in a lot of the development. And across the street from me, a gentleman just purchased a $1.5 million home, 1.5 million, okay? And, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I'm just trying to remember.
$1.5 million home. And he doesn't have any clue about this. And people, you know, people love this area, and I just don't want to do anything accusatory. I appreciate you having me here to be able to talk to you respectfully about these problems. But we got no input in these meetings. We were told what was going to happen when we went to travel, when we went to Lake Javita. We were told, and that was no input. They worked through committees, but we were basically told in a sense, "This is what's going to happen." And we had, I had no input, but what we want to know, I've got, I don't want to be accusatory because that's not right, that's not respectful to this group. What we really want to know is, because I know all about the free landscaping through this developer in the neighborhood to get people to go ahead with it, but how did this happen? How did we get this gentleman that came in, and I met him, he's a nice man, trying to do the development? How did he get here? Was he recruited by a county employee? Was he pushed by a county employee to put that development there? Why is he here? Because I've never heard of him, and like most of these people, they're like carpetbag, not this person, you know, individually, but they're like Civil War carpetbaggers. They come down here, they put their stat everywhere, and they split. And what they're doing is they're turning this community into nothing more than people that aren't from here. And any town that's vital has to have a nucleus of local people that care. If you just have a community of people from everywhere, it destroys the fabric. You need that mix, okay? So, I look at that, and we want to know that, got an answer to that question, and we want to know, with V Care, we know all about the, the development, but the one other thing I want to find out is, and we've heard this, is that there's a section of land across the road. If they get this zoning change, is this being used as a pretext to change the zoning on that 240 acres and envelop that area with intense development? And we've also heard, and we want to know this, we've even heard the developers on the V, not V Care, but, yeah, not V Care, but Hilltop Views that purchased that land, they specialize in Section 8 housing. Now, I'm all for Section 8. It's great. But do we want Section 8 housing in areas where we don't have transportation? Is that what we want in this community? We're going to become just a rolling hill of nothing but development. And then what happens is people either move out of the county, or they move to the edge of, the edge of the county where there's no, there's no traffic. So, we need answers to this. We need to know the chronology of how this happened. We've been kept in the dark completely about this thing, and no offense to him, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yeah. Is there anyone else behind this speaker? Why don't you go ahead and line up and be, be ready? And do we have anyone that's online to speak to this? Okay. So, if you're not in line, then you can't speak because we're going to cut it off with the last person that gets in line.
I can't remember the name. I, hey, I pivoted back to the minister. I don't know the name.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Nancy Hayeswood, 34110, A Nice Place, State City. I've been sworn. The Rural Area Plans Meeting started in 2005. There were over 100 participants, and perhaps we have a couple other citizens in the room that were at these Rural Area Plan meetings. Could you please stand up? You want to wave your hand, Richard? So, we do have a few. We know the intent of the Northeast Rural Area Plan. The citizens that participated in those meetings would never have agreed to a Rural Area Plan that uses 75 to insert intensities into the rural area, or had we known that the county would continually take large parcels of our Rural Area Plan, which all done over time. Part of the agreement with Pasco is letting VOPH develop at 40,000 units, and that area seems to be developing as expected. Now, the county seems to be changing the rules, and once the citizens that the assistants agreed to, and the rural area is being cut out. Now, this property has ag on the north side and ag on the west side, ag on the south side, and 75. How can the applicant just use a fourth of the area around it to pull in these intensities? That's the only place that can justify the use of these. So, you've got three-fourths of that that's all ag, and you're going to pull this in? I think that could be urban sprawl without the residents. This property has, now, I'm talking about consistency, consistency and capacity. How do you pronounce that?
Capacity?
No. Yes, thank you. Anyways, this place has splash pads, pools, pickleball courts, tennis court, clubhouse, lodge, 550 RVs, of course. How is this compatible with the rural neighbors and wildlife habitat, turkey, bobcat, gophers, foxes, horses, cows, and more? And it's private. And it's private and enclosed. This is a rural community that the wildlife has coexisted with. And when this comes, it won't. More consistency and, say it again? It's. Capability. Few sheds are protected in the Northeast Rural Area. And this is something that the applicant didn't go over. You're going to drive along 75 and you enter Pasco County, just past the Pasco County sign, and you're going to see on a hill on your right, a bunch of RVs. I don't care how much buffering you put in there, it's too low. You look up that hill. So maybe we want to change this. Welcome to Pasco, the land of the RV park. Bikes, bike or safety, a real bike path would be much safer than those shoulders. RVs and bikers don't mix. It would be wonderful if you made this into a stronger condition. Barbara Willhite and Frances Chandler were at our first planning meetings and they kind of switched hats and now they get paid by land developers. They did help write the Rural Area Plan, but they didn't do a good job. In fact, they failed. Or we wouldn't be here. This does not fit in the rural area and it's just another one of the failures in the rural area. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right, next, please. Oh, what are you doing? Oh.
I forgot them, Tori.
That was candy. Just so y'all know. Wasn't a private note. Okay.
Hi, I'm Kelly Smith. My address is 38051 Sunset Avenue in Dade City, Florida. I have been sworn. And if you could possibly put up the site plan of the prop, of the proposed development, that would be great. So that, per the LDC, the intent of the Northeast Rural Protected Overlay is to protect the character of the rural landscape, preserve scenic views and vistas, and ensure that onsite development is compatible with the character of the surrounding area. Rural is defined as relating to or characteristic of the countryside rather than the town. The proposed RV resort certainly looks more like a town than the countryside to me. The proposed RV resort is the first thing you'll see when entering the Northeast Rural Protected Overlay from I-75, and it certainly won't be considered scenic. In my opinion, and I think as shown today through others' conversations, the proposed development is simply too intense. And there seems to be a perception that the community members are really only concerned about the view and the, you know, what they'll be able to see from the roadway. That's not it. We don't care about what you can see. We care about the impact of what that development is going to have on our community. The extra traffic, the extra need for services, the extra everything. That's not appropriate in that area. I'd like to ask for the record how this non-residential PUD can be considered by the board today, given the lack of non-residential standards in the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code for the Northeast Rural Protected Overlay. In creating the overlay, the county commissioners at the time gave large landowners, the Village of Pasadena Hills, and the residents of the rural, residents of the Rural Protected Overlay, substandard land use regulations that apparently can't hold up to the greed of developers. I ask you to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Jim Weigand, last name is W E I G A N D. I live at 29129 Johnston Road, Lot 2534, Dade City. And I hadn't planned on talking, so I have not been sworn in, so.
You don't have to be sworn in.
Don't need to? Great. I have a different concern than I think everyone else has talked to today. I have a safety concern. Lake Iola and Blanton Road intersection is blind for a long distance in both directions. And I would really encourage you that if you pass this, that you look at doing something about that intersection. Because a 35-foot RV with a truck trying to turn left onto Lake Iola Road is going to block that intersection. It does now. I've seen very close to accidents already there. And if we have another 550 lots in that area, I really would encourage you to do something about that before somebody gets killed. So, thank you.
All right, this is our last speaker.
My name is Susan Meinhardt. I live at 36644 Blanton Road, Dade City, Florida. Florida 33523. I am finishing Lisa's comments because she ran out of time. I'm going to reiterate that Mr. Amid couldn't be bothered to seek our input. He's going to do what he wants to do to us and he's sorry it will be so painful. This RV park will cost Pasco County money. It will burden the residents financially and there will be limited return value to the community. Even developers say this project will boost tourism for Wesley Chapel, Mr. Amid. Well, we aren't Wesley Chapel. We are a rural area. We are the taxpayers. And we deserve to be represented by you, the people that we elected. We deserve you to follow the comprehensive plan and the Urban Land Institute recommendations that we, as taxpayers, paid for. The rural, legal, the rural area legally needs to be protected. Will you allow the county to court significant financial chaos and potential legal action? Please notice that not one person has stood up to agree with this project, except for the people who have been paid to work with the development of it. And I'm also a unfortunate, I inherited the part of the solar issue because I live on Blanton Hill and I have, I'm right straight across from the 600, the 100 acres that was purchased by, from the Jameses and the Jordans. And I didn't want that project to come to fruition because it should have been ranches. It should have been horse farms. It should have been something agriculture, not something that is an electrical entity. I pray that you, as elected officials, will vote and protect what we have paid you to protect for us. Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of public comment. And where's Barbara? Okay, you have a, how many times? Three minutes for rebuttal.
I'm just going to have Frances Chandler Moreno speak to you. Obviously, the author of the plan, and she can speak to the Northeast Pasco, which is most of the things you heard, other than a lot of derogatory things, which aren't true. But Frances Chandler.
All right, thank you, Barbara. Frances Chandler Moreno. I will speak fast, particularly because I, relative to the Rural Area Plan, I just want to let everyone and remember what we were trying to accomplish when that was being constructed. And that is, I had one immediate job. And my job was to stop the freight train. And the freight train at that time was low-density residential development. When you're stopping a freight train, you can do one thing and one thing only. But I don't think that I left the residents stranded or this board. Because in addition to that, the policies of Northeast Pasco include a specific policy, 2.1.4, that required the county to do a vision plan for Northeast Pasco to handle all these comprehensive issues. So there's never an intention that this plan would always be the plan in place and that it wouldn't evolve over time. And that policy, 2.1.4, specifies all of the details of how you move forward with.
Guys, hang on one second. You can't talk. Yeah, if you want to talk, you can go right outside that door. All right, John? Okay, no more comments from over there, okay? It's very disruptive. Not fair. You have an extra minute.
Oops, sorry. So particularly, it laid out the planning process that the county needed to, to go into in order to address this for a 50-year period. I'll point out, too, that when this plan was adopted, it was adopted with a horizon of now. You have, you've reached the end of your horizon. So your plan does need to be extended. Because right now, you're not planning for 20 years, or 30 years, or 50 years. Your plan is only meeting the needs of today. So I guess that, if there's something that I could offer you, I think that that's, that's it. It's, because I do feel a lot of pride of authorship with the Northeast Pasco Rural Plan and with those citizens. And I feel like we did a good job for them. But it wasn't complete. And when I did this assessment, I only review what's in the plan today. Not making policy, that's your job. But right now, the policies as they're constructed, this application is consistent. If you want a different result, you need different policies.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, do we have questions of the applicant?
I have one.
I have some, too.
I may have a couple, if you don't mind.
Make some notes.
I don't know, Ms. Willhite? So, can we have a map of the project? We have a printout, but obviously, I can't just hold this up and show everybody. If we don't mind pulling it up. Actually, could we put up the, I don't know if this is a Google Earth or what I have here. It's kind of like a, almost like a Google Earth with the, with the project in between. It would be, it would be this right here.
Yeah, I'm trying to get to it.
Yeah, okay. Let me make sure.
Might be fighting each other here.
Let me see which one you're talking about.
Oh, okay. It's right there. There you go.
Right there. Okay. Wait, zoom in. Because I'm, okay. So I'm just curious. So there's a, if I look at Lake, is that Lake Ida?
Iola.
Iola? Can't read. There, now it's, okay, there we go. That's better. Our screen was distorted, so now we can see. Lake Iola Road. And across the street, I see a home, directly across the street. I don't, did that person speak? The person that has the home across the street?
I don't think anyone's living.
No.
I don't think anybody's living in that home.
Okay, if you go down and we go up to the top of the screen, I see another home. Is that?
That's a barn.
It's a barn. I see a home right there.
And a home to the north of it.
Okay. What about the home? If you look at the project with the small, with the retention pond, and we look to the west, there's a home a little bit northwest. I gotta, I'm asking, I gotta ask the, is that person here?
No.
I mean, I'm just asking the audience. Okay.
She's in hospital.
Is there anybody that I can see, any of the homes here on the screen, that abut the project actually in the room? Because I was going to ask a couple of questions.
Nobody here.
No, you can't speak from the audience. It's the chair. Yeah. I was just asking if anybody was here, so, okay. You can't, you gotta stop talking from the audience. You're going to go out.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's, that's, we tried. We tried. All right, okay. Go ahead, Barbara. So it sounds like we don't have any adjacent owners here.
Okay, so my next question is, okay, we talked about the environment. We look at the lake and I see a retention pond there. Tell us again what considerations, if any, have been given to any negative runoff or that could have a negative effect on the lake.
Let me have Joe Semino come up and.
Joe Semino, WRA Engineering, 4260 West Lineby Avenue, 33624. I have been sworn. Commissioner Moore, we are draining into Moody Lake, which discharges the middle lake, which ultimately makes its way down Hancock Lake. It's a closed basin system, which means we're going to be held to the strictest standards for discharge rate. So we'll be held to closed basin criteria. We'll have to match pre-post 100-year storm conditions. So that takes care of the attenuation and the flood control. Water quality would be in accordance with EPA standards, which have been delegated to state standards, which both the Water Management District and Pasco, and Pasco County adhere to, will be held to water quality treatment standards.
We'll need a swift mud permit of some type.
Absolutely. We'll get a swift mud permit. Yes.
Well, I just want to make sure. That's why I'm asking the applicant here.
And not to go too deep down the rabbit hole with the technicalities, but because it's a closed basin and we're required to hold back so much volume, the amount of water quality treatment will be multiple times the norm. Because we're actually holding back so much water that we'll only really get to the lake through groundwater percolation versus surface water discharge.
So as somebody that does spend a lot of time in RV parks, and I think Carol and Dot, we sat, we sat before, and I think Richard as well, we had meetings in the past, even a few years back, we talked about the possibility of like an equestrian center or something like that, which obviously would be a good fit. But, same time, I just want to remind you guys, you know, when we talked about this that day, is my daughters, I have two daughters that ride horses and we have a motor home. So we travel from equestrian center to equestrian center. We also go to numerous state and national parks. We've been as far north on the, you know, as northern, mid-northern Ohio, for example, when stayed actually at a county park that had a, that actually had an RV park in a lake, in a very big lake that was maintained by, by the county itself. But when I think about it, when we go to these equestrian centers, they have numerous RV sites though, too. I mean, a massive, massive amount of RV sites, a very large majority of the ones we go to. There's some smaller ones that may only have, you know, like 15 or 20 or 30 spots, you know, kind of the, the smaller facilities that really aren't the upper echelon of the equestrian world, but they do have those. And I've been to a number of, again, state parks, you know, Smoky Mountain National Park, you know, Everglades and things like that, and there's RV parks within them. So I, listen, I, and again, we've had great meetings and I adore you guys and stuff. This one right here, though, I honestly kind of thought it would be almost more welcome for the area. And I say that because the last thing I'd want to see is that those high-density homes there on the 40-foot and 50-foot lots are, God forbid, in a giant apartment complex that sits there as well. I mean, sorry, that's just my mindset, you know? I honestly thought, and I appreciate everybody's comments and your testimony and everything you've considered and the work you put into it. I honestly just thought, you know, this would be more of a welcome thing, you know, considering some of the past conversations we had, especially when it comes to possibly having an equestrian center or something like that. Because you look at the amount of horse trailers that would be going back and forth on a daily basis, because these shows nowadays, lots of times they'll start on a Tuesday or Wednesday and they'll start training like on Monday. It's almost a seven a week, day a week thing. So you've got multiple hundreds and hundreds of horse trailers possibly going back and forth. Plus, you have your motor homes and travel trailers and things like that. Again, I appreciate everything you guys have said. I just, you know, I mean, I, I just think this is so much better than the possibility of a very condensed, single-family home or possibly multi-family home project. But that's, that's my opinion, so.
May I, while you're still up there, and I think this, I think this might be kind of along the line of you asking. So I think Lisa, in her notes, I took notes on things everyone said, wastewater plant. And is that you? Is that someone else? Because that's kind of to the water quality.
They have a plant.
Yeah, I'm at the chair.
Why is it, why is someone saying they don't think it's allowed here?
I don't know, but it's very important for these, these projects to have that facility onsite versus having to worry about the county resources to do that.
And how does the water quality and the drainage and the sewer from the water, the wastewater, how does it flow? And how does the septic work? Since there's no septic, how does, how do the wells work? And the soil quality?
Let me give you the 40,000-foot view. And if there's still questions, the people that actually designed the plants can take you way deep down the rabbit hole on how it works. But I think one of the things we learned, the last time I was standing in this podium, was there was a misconception that there was like a septic drain field. was there was a misconception that there was like a septic drain field that was being installed. That is not the case. Any sewage that comes out of these RVs will be a direct connection into a sewer, sewer connection, just like a residential home, that takes it through a gravity sewer to a water treatment plant on the site. Unlike a septic drain field that just gets held and distributed into the ground, and we hope the ground does its magic, it actually gets treated. And these guys, if you would like, will take you into the, into the deep technicalities of how much it will be treated. But it will be treated to secondary treatment standards and then distributed back underground through infiltration basins throughout the site. There's about eight acres of infiltration around the site. But at that point, it is not sewage. It is, it is effluent that's coming from a wastewater treatment plant that has been treated to secondary standards that these guys would be more than happy to tell you about.
Madam Chair, just, can I continue on with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very important. Again, somebody that's gone to a number of RV parks throughout the nation, you can tell sometimes the ones that don't have those facilities, because it's, sometimes it's not a pleasant experience if you're staying there. So it is very, it is very important. How, how do we, how do we see this written into the plans? Where's our, where's the guarantee that this, this water treatment plant will be done as part of the project? Or facility, I guess you could sell it, call it.
So they have, obviously, state standards they have to apply, comply with, but we're just a transmittal of comp plan?
I know.
If there's things that you want to make sure we, yeah, if you, things, the MPD, we have two months until it comes back. If there's things you want to make sure that we write into the MPD, we can do that?
Yeah, but I would assume that's something you probably would be willing to do.
Of course.
Okay. Because it is important, because, again, there are concerns, you know, we have environmental concerns about the lake and surrounding waters and the soil.
They also have a pot, they'll have a well on the property that'll make it into a public well system, water system. And they will use water directly off that property.
Madam Chair, one more thing, if you, maybe you or Mr. Stein center could also explain this hearing compared to the hearing that will be coming up.
Right, because I have a lot of questions, and I'm just wondering.
What should be asked today by us? What should be asked during the next public hearing?
So normally, I admonish you all that it's a comp plan hearing, and you can't go into details, except that this one is a PD comp plan hearing. And they're a little different, because they have to, it envisions a subsequent plan. So anything that you would like to see in a sub-area policy in your comprehensive plan, you can ask about.
Okay, I have some questions.
And then, but knowing that this is also an MPUD, so you can also deal with it at that, at that level as well. But this isn't your traditional, oh, it's Res 16, and it's going to be an apartment complex kind of discussion, because it's, because it is a PD.
All right, Commissioner Mariano.
It used to be when we had these hearings like this, we'd have them both back-to-back. We'd put everything together on it.
But you can't, you can't do the zoning until you do the adoption of your comprehensive plan amendment. My guess is Ms. Willhite will have planned to have her adoption hearing of the, of the ordinance adoption of the comp plan category and the MPUD back-to-back then.
Right.
But this is transmittal.
So, and I'm glad you bring it up, this is the time to ask all the questions we want. I think the paper we give has got a lot of good questions, so I think this is the time to ask all the questions upfront right now.
Well, I'll, so, do you have any questions?
But I'll wait, go ahead.
Okay, so I have a little list. So we had a question about the topography. Are you changing the, are you doing changes to the topography?
One of the biggest reasons we went from 675 to 550 was because of the topography. The site is about the hilius site you can do civil engineering on in the area. So that's why we have a road that's about a mile with nothing on it. That's to help transition through that topography. So it's not going to be a clear cut of the site, turn it into a big flat site. It's going to be working with the topography stepping down into these multiple pods. And the hill dropped off so, so steeply, and we had to preserve that slope. That's, again, why we have about a mile of road, or we have that 2,000 feet or so of road with nothing on it, just to get down the hill.
Okay, so we're not changing the topography? Because I know we wrote that into the-
The comp plan speaks to that, we wrote a sub-area policy that speaks to that.
I remember that, when we wrote that. Okay, I don't know how to address the Panther, but, I mean, that's great if we had a Panther there. I actually saw wolves on Stark Boulevard a couple of years ago, two, two giant wolves. Native species, do you, I would assume you're going to be putting native, a lot of native species in there, because those are much cheaper to maintain, but native species?
Yes.
Solar, you know, if you were to think about it, Epperson has solar streetlights, and I think they're available for other communities, so that's just a thought, that you might look at those solar streetlights. And thinking out of the solar, of the streetlights, and that someone mentioned dark sky, I mean, we have that ordinance in the county. You can't have a light shine up, because we're preserving the dark sky, so.
They're preparing for that.
So your, your lights are going to be shining down, right? All right.
We're following the, you have land development code standards, we're going to follow.
Okay, Sasha also mentioned walkable communities. And when I met with you, we, it doesn't show it on this plan, but my understanding is that you have, this was the second time I met with you guy, you guys, there are, it's easy for the members to walk around here between those big roads. You had some walkable green space.
We have two miles of sidewalks pass and a nature walk.
Yeah, but I mean, to get from one street to another and to move through.
Yes.
Let's see, the six months, so you cannot live for six months here, pull out, and then come back in and use someone else's name or something and spend another six months, is that correct? There is some kind of safeguard that, because I think some people try and pull that one. We don't want that.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I don't, honestly, again, I'm just using experience, experience. Yeah, this isn't a, this isn't an inexpensive-
Right.
-place, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that would be very, very costly to do that. You would probably want to find like a, again, like a state park or a county park or something like that where the rates are much lower. At least, I would assume this place is probably going to, I don't know how much you're going to charge, but I would assume it's pretty high.
I'm just going through the questions that were brought to me and that were mentioned here. Okay, sound. If, if there is a, a sound system, can that sound be projected towards 75? So that the, the decibels are heading to the highway and not over the lake? Just as you do your layout?
That's a good idea. We will certainly think about that. All the RV resorts I've been to are pretty quiet places. And so we don't intend to bring people in and then annoy them with noise.
Yeah, okay. What?
Maybe having concerts or anything? That was one of the concerns.
I wouldn't think.
Well, I'm, I'm just, that, we can't stop them.
The issue came up when somebody said it, there was a band shell. I think that's where some of this is coming from.
Okay, let's see, what other one? Oh, that intersection. Is that inter, Lake Iola and Blanton intersection, is that a, is that a problem?
You do have your traffic operations director, Van Cutt, on Webex, if you want to hear from him about the intersection.
Yeah.
I can give you an answer. When this first came about, we talked about with Margaret Smith and her group in engineering and traffic and FDOT. And they researched this entire intersection. Because I, like some of our neighbors out there, I also felt it would be a problem. And it came out that it's not a problem, according, according to the traffic folks, engineers.
Looks like a perfect intersection for a roundabout rather than that funky way that they have.
Maybe in the future, but at this time, they, they kind of gave a report that it was not that big of an issue. And I, I felt, I think I heard one of the neighbors speak of that. And I felt the same way the first time I heard about the project. And I called in Margaret Smith and engineers in traffic and FDOT to research that right off the bat, to be sure it was not a problem.
I'm so, and lastly, I, we, I talked with the applicants about landscaping, and that, that every lot could have, have a tree. They've got a pretty comprehensive landscape plan. They don't, they're going to show it at the next meeting, because I asked for visuals. But I think it's important that the canopy, that there be a tree canopy on this property. And they have committed to that. And the pads, I believe they're going to be concrete pavers, not poured concrete. So.
We get an answer on that, though?
Brian, you want to? His answer was, they're pavers.
And how are they installed?
So, so, so concrete pavers are pervious, not impervious, so.
Right.
So that's good. And I think that, for me, that answered all the notes I took from, oh, and I, and I'm, I have checked what they're doing and asked them to look at that AECOM study and took it to the cycling community. We took it to the B-PAC, and they're comfortable with the six-lane addition on the side for the cycling community. Boy, wouldn't we like to have that other places?
We'll be the start of that.
I didn't realize until you spoke today about the bike path that you were going to add to the road. I think that's very good, because I had an issue with, when I got on 41 the other day from Traveler's Rest, I got in behind some bikers, and that's a real issue. And it's a safety issue, we need to look at doing those. And Commissioner Stark and I both feel the same way about that. Somebody brought up earlier, they were referring to this, like in Zephyr Hills, all the RV parks in Zephyr Hills. This is an RV resort, and it's not a residential park like in Zephyr Hills or Traveler's Rest, which is probably within a mile of this project, has been there, they celebrated it on Saturday. Over 50 years, been a part of the community. They have their own store, grocery store, they have their own sheriff's deputy, they have a fire station, they have all these things. And they've been there for over 50 years and been a great part of the community. And a lot more people than what's here, questioned here, because there's 1,500 or so in that park, so. But they, they've had a, a great, been a great part and a partner to the county and the citizens here in Pasco County in this area.
Okay. Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. So I know we have a decibel sound ordinance, so it can, the decibels can only be so high. One of the questions I received previously was how would the pavers be installed? Would they just be, were they permeable in between, they're obvious, they would not be pouring concrete between the pavers?
Got to meet Brian, he's got to come up here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brian Nolan with La Cito and Associates, 701 East Ocean Boulevard, Stewart. I've been sworn in, but I know it's not necessary. There would be vehicular grade pavers, so they'd be extra thick on a vehicular grade, sub-compacted base. We'd have to look at the soil conditions to see if pervious would work. Sometimes you get washouts under them. I know some of these RVs can be quite heavy. They're also utilize stabilizer pads sometimes on the bigger Class As. So the, the washout of the underlayment would be my concern with using pervious pavers. So I don't think at this time we could capitulate to pervious, but I see no issues with, with pavers.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Can I follow up on that? So if you, if you've checked the soils out, and the soil's not strong enough, you're afraid of washouts, et cetera, instead of making it a full concrete pad or asphalt pad, is there a space width that you can have to take care of the wheels on each side of it? So you can put pavers in the center part, concrete or asphalt to the side?
Our, our intention would be to do pavers. But whether or not the pavers would be a pervious system.
Right, obviously, we want to see pervious.
The county considers any concrete paver pervious. It's-
Understood.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So let me, let me just finish with what I'm trying to say. So if you find the soils don't work to where you can make it a pervious system, and you've got to put a concrete bottom or something, is there a way that you can take, where the wheels are going to go for the RVs, and isolate those areas as a concrete pad or asphalt pad, wherever it's going to be? And then in between that, on the, in the middle part of it, to go put the pervious?
That's certainly a possibility, under the county's definition. So South Florida Water Management District, which is where I operate, they don't classify pavers as, as pervious, they classify them as impervious. So there are certain pavers with a gap between them that allow water to percolate through, that are usually backfilled with a, with a fine puddle. Those are the pervious pavers that I'm referring to, where the water actually passes through.
Right.
I think at the very least, we could do a paver pad on all of the pads. Now, whether or not it is the, the industry standard of what would be classified as a pervious system to allow water to pass between the pavers, that would depend on the soil, the soils, you know, at the site, which our civil engineer can, can talk to more specifically. But to put a mixed system of grout set, you know, on, on concrete pads under the wheels, you could get different stable, you know, settling issues where some of the pavers could settle, whereas other pavers wouldn't, because they're on concrete. So I would prefer it to just be one, one system or the other.
Will you be able to do your soil testing before the next round comes back to us?
Did they do borings out there yet?
Yes, there was geotechnical testing, not on every pad. Is, can I ask you a question? Is it a concern water runoff? Is that?
Yeah, we want to try to have as much pervious as we can so the water sinks down through the soils as opposed to doing runoff.
Right, understood. And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are no concrete pads being built for driveways. Every pad will be a paver system.
Correct.
Every pad will be a paver system. Right, and, but for my stormwater calculations, I have to assume water can't go through it.
That's okay. Now, that'll just make it better for drainage.
Exactly, exactly. So I have to, whatever world they're living in, I have to, I have to pretend that water can't go through it at all.
Okay.
But there is not a concrete pad underneath of the pavers?
No. No, there would be vehicular grade pavers, which are a little bit thicker than your typical backyard patio paver.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Can we have more discussion? I have, I've waited.
Okay.
So I do want to go through a few things that were in here, too, that I didn't hear about.
Oh, okay, Jack, why don't you finish, and we'll go to Christine.
The water will be drinkable?
She was speaking.
She was speaking.
Yeah, let her finish.
Asking if the water will be drinkable.
There'll be well water that is drinkable, yes.
So is the water from a well, then?
Yes.
Yes, the potable drinking water is from a well.
Okay, my last question is that I had some citizens ask concerns. What is, and I've asked you this, and you said the taxes, the property taxes are on a per-space basis? Do you have that today, or can you provide that?
Sure, I can provide that. The mobility fees are per space. Taxes, it's adverum taxation. I don't have the numbers, but, and then we also pay tourist tax. I know those are like, estimated about $350,000 a year in tourist tax to the county. But I can get the adverum numbers from the property browser.
Thank you for bringing back. That's it.
Commissioner Mariano.
So one of the questions was asked on here, and I talked with the residents about it, was water banking. Is there a way that you can bank some of the stormwater that goes in by creating a big stormwater holding facility?
So we do have to create large stormwater management ponds.
Right.
Under a normal syst, I, I mentioned earlier, it was in a closed basin. Moody Lake's not a closed basin, Middle Lake's not a closed basin, but as you go down a few more lakes, the water just sort of stops. So that's going to require us to have a special kind of stormwater management facility. So it's not going to be the kind that just water flows into it, it holds it back, and then discharges it all out into Moody Lake. We actually have to hold back water a little bit more because of the closed basin criteria. So we're effectively going to be creating what you're saying.
Okay. Barbara, we had talked about the splash pad, how much it uses water. We talked about looking at using a system that would take a lot of the recycled water. Have you guys done a study on that, and how's, what's the results? On the splash pad?
Yes, we, we talked to our water use folks this morning, Yes, we, we talked to our water use folks this morning and we'll work on a condition that we can bring back at the MPUD regarding how to write it that we have to recycle the water for the splash pad.
And for the board, the reason I'm asking the question is the more water that uses there, it's hard to, it's, it's very important to recycle so you minimize the amount of water and discharge you're going to have out there later on. All right, so let me just get to Commissioner Oakley, may I ask you a question? When you're driving along Lake Iola Road and you're stuck behind the bikers, how wide was that? Because you said it was tough to pass, so even if it's four feet, how wide were the bikers out there?
Well, you take one bike and you take a grown man on that bike and whatever his shoulder width and his handlebars. I mean, it looked like it was two and a half, three feet, but you're taking it out of, I don't know what that road is out there, if it's 12 foot or it's probably.
They were in a line.
10 foot lanes. But they're in a line on one side. But they take up that three feet out of that lane. You can't just drive right by them. There's no way.
So they're, they're all single filed, they're not out?
They were single filed, they were not, I've seen them three deep across and four deep, but they were not, they were by and by the single file. But you, as a car, in your, in your lane, you could not drive straight past them.
Okay. So in the southern part of this development, that's where the upgrade, they say, is, is good, it's tough to make it wider. My thought was, in talking with them, we should actually look, instead of just doing the six feet, maybe we should look at going even lot wider, like eight feet. If you've considered that or do you think it's reasonable to go that way? To make it a little bit safer, give yourself a little bit more room?
Well, and MPO, I think, has some area that we can go into and it deals with safety, that we probably could get some of those grant funds that we could use for some of our roads.
I'm looking for them to pay for it, not a grant fund. So I'm looking for them to pay for it, not for a grant fund.
I wonder if you should go wider than seven?
So if they're going to come in, and I'll, I'll give them some slack on the first part, which is the steeper grade, right? Because hopefully people go single file, but once you get up closer and closer, I think it's safer if you go wider than not. And I feel like, I don't think a couple of feet's unreasonable. I'm comfortable with asking for that.
Yeah, and they're taking care of the part just coming down Lake Iola Road in front of that property, down, down to Bay Head, because that's the normal travel of the bikers.
Yeah.
They'll come from Lake Iola, across interstate, go down to Bay Head and take a left on Bay Head and go down Bay Head.
All right, so I'm going to ask, Barbara, we talked about this going wider, knowing that the first part's a little bit more difficult because of the steep slope that's there, for the rest of it, let's say, coming up to, closer to the entryway, are you guys comfortable going to an eight foot wide path for the remainder going to the north?
We, we can certainly look at that before we come back. I mean, just explain where we got, we, we didn't make up these shoulders, they're your study.
I understand.
Your study recommended four. We did six, because they recommend six if your bikers are going uphill because they sway back and forth to try to get up the hill. So that's where we came from, just so you know, we didn't just say six. We actually looked at the study that Commissioner Starkey suggested we look at. So, but we'll, we can look at that. We can have our team look at the difference between six and eight.
And I want to, I want to say, you know, way back when we did the year report with Francis Chileno Moreno, one of the things we looked at was all the different employment centers around this whole county. We took every interchange up and down, including 4175, even knowing the topographical differences of this one interchange, interchange around the whole county was designed for something commercial to be in that area. Exactly what was going to happen, didn't know, but that was why we targeted this one area for that one thing. And this is like, I'm writing a budding it, and by the way, Barbara, the next time, I wish you'd have the picture like we talked about, where you can see the interchange in relation to the project. Because around that is where the density, some density should come. It shouldn't sprawl out, but around this interchange, we had to expect something to come in there. And I also said.
That interchange, staff's been looking at that interchange and there's already some employment generated businesses coming there, not started yet, but it's been approved to be there.
Yeah.
And it's been on the, on the books for 30 years, been approved to have employment centers, so.
Yeah. And when, when we were doing this, one of the things I suggested that didn't get adopted was to the, when you look at Pinellas and Hillsborough, how they developed in northern part of the county, budding to us and look what it did for us, it jammed us up all the way up and down. And now those people are coming up and around, it's a mess down there when it could have been much better set. I've always said the, the northern half mile of Pasco County should be more intense all the way around that border. Because you know Hernando County is going to grow stronger at the bottom to the south.
Yeah.
So, I don't want to go past that point as far as density goes, I'd like to keep it to the role that we got.
Right.
And that's one of the things. So let me just add one, one extra thing about the project, Barbara. Do you have a sponsor for horses and horse trailers to come in with the RVs?
You know, I've been asked that question recently. I don't know the answer, but we will get an answer.
Okay, so the next presentation, I'd like you to bring something back where you can actually make this more horse friendly as well.
How do they make it horse friendly?
If you got a, so you can take a horse trailer and be able, be able to park your horse?
Well, they travel, they're travel horse, there's horses out there, they travel a lot, so.
Or if I'm the light.
Even in Northeast Rural, the Northeast Rural group have spoke to me several times about wanting a equestrian event center somewhere out in the Northeast Rural area. But then when you talk about it.
In a paddock or something? What, how do you?
Well, what Mr. Moore, we were talking about, is when you have that arena and you have all the horse trailers with the living quarters and all and the buses that come along with that, then there's almost like a RV park along with that event and that event could last four, five days or a week.
Yeah, I have friends that do that.
But there, there's, there's got to be give and take and, and there's a right vision for it. I don't have it yet, but I think there's something that, that's out there that's going to be unique, very beautiful for the Northeast area.
Well, Madam Chair?
Yep.
When you're considering the bike path, having possibly like an equestrian trail going alongside of it? So just incorporating the equestrian and the bike routes together?
Okay, now we're getting.
Yeah, we're getting the weeds a little bit. Yeah, so, and I appreciate the comments.
So are we under discussion? Or did we have a motion?
We have.
I've got a motion.
Feed them and things like that, so that would be good.
Okay.
I move.
Approval?
Second.
You move, you move transmittal to the Department of Economic.
Yeah, say it that way.
Okay, and we have a second. Any more discussion? Is this a roll call vote or a regular vote?
It's a regular vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are back to Dan Byall. Do you have anything more you want to share? Okay, to the clerk?
No.
No? No, to the county attorney? You know, yeah, to the county attorney? I had something, darn it, if I didn't write it down, I, I can remember. Give them one minute, they're out here. I want to discuss, I can't remember what it was.
Commissioner Oakley?
He's going to another meeting.
Is he?
I have something else, I can't remember what it was.
Okay.
Okay, we're still, hey, guys, you're going to have to take your conversation out, sorry. We're still in the middle of our meeting. Please go on outside the doors, thank you very much. Oh, yeah, I remember what it is. Okay. All right, county attorney.
Madam Chairman, members of the board. At your January 11th meeting, the board directed that a moratorium for development around airports be adopted so that incompatible development does not occur during the time that airport zoning regulations will be drafted and adopted to protect the airports within the county from incompatible land uses. Since that time, your, the moratorium ordinance was drafted, it was advertised, it was, it was heard by the Planning Commission on February 3rd, though at that meeting, the staff requested that the public hearing be continued so that a few tweaks could be made. At this point, the maps have been drawn for the airports, the moratorium areas are, there are four different classifications, height obstruction area maps, Part 77 surface areas, noise abatement areas, and the runway protection zones. It would, and since those maps are now available to the public, it would be my recommendation to the board that when the ordinance is brought to you, that the moratorium applies to any development that has not been filed as of today's date when those maps are available. And if that's the wishes of the board, that's the way the ordinance will be drafted to be brought back to you. But under the pending, under pending ordinance doctrine, since the maps are now produced and people have knowledge of where those areas are going to be, doesn't mean you can't, couldn't pull back from that at your final hearing. But if any applications are filed between now and when that, and when the ordinance is adopted and you choose to use the pending ordinance doctrine, they would be on hold, they would not be able to go forward. They would be on hold until your moratorium ends. Otherwise, I'm, I'm afraid that you're going to start to have applications, which was the whole reason that the, the moratorium, that the board asked for the moratorium.
We made that mistake when we did billboards. We let it, while the whole time in the moratorium, we could accept applications.
Right.
We got hundreds.
They might have pre-apps, pre-apps on that one, maybe.
Yeah, I would, I would like a motion that that's the way, that's the way you want the ordinance to come back to you.
Okay, all right, so I moved.
Second. Okay, so we have first and a second to accept the attorney's recommendation. Where's Ron?
Look to, he had another meeting.
Okay. All right, so any more discussion? All right, and we can always fix it if there's some, some big issue.
You can, you can pull back from that position at the hearing, but at this point.
Protects us a little.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? All right, four, zero.
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Okay, am I next?
Clerk.
Clerk.
Well, we can go back to you, certainly.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Clerk Alvarez Soles wanted me to bring just a couple of items to you. An update, over the last two weekends, we conducted the Big Shred, an annual event for the clerk's office. Wanted to extend our thanks to the counties of utilities, recycling crews for their participation and it was great, and Shred 360, the vendor that participated. It was very cold, we, it, two weeks ago on Saturday morning, we still had a pretty good turnout in Newport Ritchie and ended up with about five and a half tons of shred there in, in Dade City this last weekend. It was about the same as last year with about three tons. So over the last five events or two years, we have done about 45 tons of shredding recycling that has been able to assist the county. So, again, thank you to county staff and Shred 360 for your participation. Next Monday morning, the annual Valentine's Day wedding ceremony will be here at the courthouse. Thank you for the use of it. We hope not to have to come inside, we're hoping for it to be outside, but again, there'll be about 20 couples that are planning on getting married on next, next Monday, next Monday, Valentine's Day at 11 o'clock here at the historic courthouse. The other thing that she would like to pass along that came from the Clerks Association, and this is kind of a special heads up to county staff, in the realm of new scam, they are going in and looking at public records to find in various public records, and this one case was clerk's office, but where monies are owed, and then start approaching as if they were a county employee. And they're using very detailed information based upon what they can find in public records to outstanding amounts that might be on, in this one particular case was a traffic ticket, but there could be other kinds of amounts out there that have been recorded or are available through MyPasco or other things on accounts that might be held. So just a heads up, they're getting very good at identifying information that becomes, that makes it quite believable, and then in the process are asking for debit card information. So, the one that's being investigated in Pinellas County by the sheriff's office, but they're getting very sophisticated and Nikki wanted us to pass this along, just a heads up, they're going into new and more expanded areas and thank you very much.
Thank you. So your shred made, reminded me that each commissioner annually can have a cleanup of a community in their district. So we're determining which one ours is going to be. I just want to remind you, Commissioner Moore, if.
Say that one more time.
So each, each commissioner is allowed one community cleanup where the tipping fees are waived and they'll come out. So you just might want to think about what in your area might be beneficial.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I was, we were, we were thinking at some point to do that, try to do that Angus Valley area, we just kind of need, we need that person to tend to take charge as usually have a community leader. And that's the area we were kind of wanted to focus on.
And Commissioner Oakley may have an area as well. Then I want to say, I've been driving by the VA clinic and it looks like it's almost, almost ready. It's, it's really looking beautiful. Do we have any idea of a ribbon cutting for that? We, I received a letter about us not responding to an audit and are we jumping on that, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Some of you may be getting calls about the car dealership moratorium. Just want you to know, we are working together to put, we are putting together a stakeholder group to work on issues concerning the new moratorium that, well, that's it. There's a moratorium in effect, but we're working on a new ordinance and we will have a stakeholder group. So if you get phone calls, just direct them over to, I guess to my assistant Katie, who's putting this meeting together. Since there is not a county person assigned yet to write that ordinance, we're not going to have that meeting until we know who's going to be working on the ordinance. But, but there were some, there were some concerns out there in the industry that we might be hurting some of the new dealerships coming up, but I think we've pretty much rested their fears that none of them will be stopped in any way. And just direct any questions, maybe to Denise, and if someone calls you. But we've reached out to, and, and, and the Scott Finks group, Rich Beckett, Larry Morgan, the Furmans, and some, some.
Reach out to him.
Who?
Jay Rosario.
I don't know if that exists.
He used to own, he used to own Wesley Chapel Nissan.
So.
He has a site, he already purchased as well.
Okay, so we, we just want to make sure they know that this is not going to affect their, this won't, the intent is not to stop them from building their new developments, that's not, and they should not be affected, but we want to know if there's any issues. But we want them centralized, so send them, I guess send them to Denise for, for now.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So just to be clear, the ordinance moratorium part is just for used car dealerships, not for new car dealerships?
No, we are not allowed to distinguish between. But if you want to hear some good discussion about it, go to the Planning Commission meeting. I've listened to it twice, just to be sure what I was listening, and there's a great discussion on it there in the Planning Commission. And it's, towards the end, it was the last item, it's a very short Planning Commission, so you can hear the discussion there, it's my suggestion.
When is that coming in front of us?
Does someone want to answer that?
Next meeting?
I.
They just went to Planning Commission last meeting.
I think the, I think they're on the 22nd, I could be wrong.
Yeah, 22nd, but then there'll be another one, so, so there'll be lots of time to adjust any issues, but there will be a stakeholder meeting.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm all for changing the used car dealership ordinance, but I don't want to affect anybody who might be coming in or part property and to affect that in any way, because if they pick to go just to the north or just to the south of us.
Right, that's not our intent. But for legal reasons, they, they couldn't distinguish, but if you want to expand on that.
Well, I just wanted to clarify the hearing dates, so the 22nd is first reading and then the 8th is adoption. So 22nd of, of February, the first reading, it'll come to the board, and the 8th of March is the adoption hearing before the board. We did, again, Commissioner Starkey made a good point, please listen to the LPA, we did create some carve-outs, and that should handle it. And we did have a phone call with at least one new car dealer owner with Commissioner Starkey.
Who's got three coming.
And he's comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But they still want to give their input as we write the ordinance and that, and we always do that, we always have stakeholder meetings.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I know, Madam Chair, and, and, I don't want to get into weeds too much, but like, for example, that one gentleman I talked to, talked to you about a second ago, he had purchased property some time ago, which kind of abuts the Lexus dealer in Wesley Chapel, as it's actually in the back of Seven Oaks along 75, as well as the Toyota dealership. But his concept is a little different than a new car. But his concept is a little different than a new car dealer. It's the certified...
I think it's a reconditioning facility.
Used car dealership, Motor Trend, which they have one in Orlando already. So, but, I don't know, we can wait till the public hearing, but...
Okay.
Now, you, did you already talk, you already talked to him?
I thought the one you were talking about was a reconditioning facility, because we are getting one in off of Eagleston.
That's, if that's what you want to call it, I guess.
Do you want to, can you send the...
They don't sell vehicles, the way they explained it to me, and this was just literally Friday, they don't sell vehicles from that facility. What they do is, and they're not open to the public, what they do is they take in cars and they recondition them and then ship them out somewhere else.
That must be a whole different project.
Okay, because this is right off of Eagleston and right next to, right on Eagleston, next to, I think it's Lexus.
Yeah, maybe they got some other plans too, I'm not aware of, so...
So, since...
Sounds like they order the car online and then it gets shipped there and then...
So in the Planning Commission, there were some edits to...
Yes.
Can you send that to all the commissioners?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then, again, if you have questions, it's very well explained at the Planning Commission. Okay.
And of course, please, I do not want to take credit for this, is Elizabeth Blair with the county attorney's office. I've just been assisting in this regard, and we are getting a group together on February 24th, and we'll know who the project manager for the group will be after that.
It's not a real long, lengthy, complicated ordinance. The fix is pretty simple, so I think everyone's going to be okay. February 22nd, oh, so Gulf Harbors, MSBU, will be on our next meeting. It's been advertised. Sorry, Barbara Willhite is not here. She's been working like crazy and they have, she's got another stakeholder meeting with some of the residents to make sure all the concerns are all laid. We're just down to the advisory committee language, but Commissioner Fitzpatrick, you haven't been here through all the fun, so I think you're number one on the list for people to come, speak to you, to inform you. But I think you'll all be getting a meeting set up before that. And lastly, and Jack, this is kind of sad news, I spoke to David Green yesterday, and he informed me that DOT has been working with CSX for possible acquisition of the rail corridor, and CSX said they are no longer interested in selling it.
True.
That they anticipate that they will be using it more and more for their own uses and it's off the table.
What areas are...
So that means that our BRT, that's it. That's our, that's it. So that becomes more urgent. So, okay, I think with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you, ma'am.